I will, I'm writing myself a note right now. You've been married, what, sixty years?
Yeah.
That's a long time.
The button is up. Forget about something.
I don't know, mine works backwards.
Test, test. Okay, thank you. Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Canyon Lake City Council at 6:30 PM, right on time. So I call the open session to order invitation. We got One Day Pastor John, George Donelli, and his wife. John and Christie are very active in the Canyon Lake Community Church. So, thank you, John.
Good, good evening, everybody, and it's a pleasure and an honor to be here. Before I get started, I'm doing some strategic planning. I was talking to Betsy beforehand for directors and officers of corporations. And I ran across this, a quote from the Bible, Philippians, and I thought it was apropos for tonight. So I'd like to read it to you. It says, "This is God's view of your leadership." And it says, "Do nothing from selfishness or empty conceit, but with humility of mind, regard one another as more important than yourselves. Do not merely look out for your own personal interests, but also for the interest of others." And so, I thought that was pretty good and apropos considering how hard y'all work. And so, if we can join me in a moment of prayer, that'd be great. Dear Heavenly Father, we are just so grateful for an opportunity that you've given to us to live in a free country where our duly-elected leaders can come forward and guide us. Lord, we thank you for these people. We ask that you give them both your wisdom and your understanding, Lord, that they may use the knowledge that they have to the advantage and to the benefit of the community at large. We thank you for this wonderful community that we live in, for all of its many benefits, and for the people that reside in it. And we thank you again for your many blessings, and in Christ's name we pray. Thank you very much.
Amen. Could you, John, could you lead in a flag?
I'm honored. Could you stay with me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Hagerty.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Bonner.
Here.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the city council agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we need to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. All right. At the request of Mayor Bonner, we've asked to put on the agenda. We put on consent. The League of California Cities is asking for an urgency no vote on SB 649, which has to do with small cell towers and the state taking away local governments' rights to be able to negotiate those contracts. And so, they're asking, there's not a letter to it. They're asking for verbal confirmation. So they're asking for councils, particularly the mayors, to contact their state elected officials directly to urge them to vote no. And so, they're asking to put this on consent as item 7.11.
Okay. Aaron and Betsy, we cannot put under consent?
You can add it to consent if you wish.
Can we do that?
Yeah. Yeah. Our study attorney says we can add it to consent.
Okay, does anybody have any? Right here. Problem with doing that?
So it had 7.11?
Yeah, that's what I told them. So it'd be item 7.11.
To approve the agenda with that one addition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, a special presentation. I see Jim Randall here as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Jim?
Jim. John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. The thirtieth of this month, we're having our annual, our seventh annual Oktoberfest up in the upper parking lot. We'll have traditional food, live music by the American Bavarian Brass Band, beer, wine garden, kids' own vendor booths, and more. There are several contests that include hot dog eating, jalapeno eating, and more. There will be a few spots remaining for non-food vendors. If anyone's interested, they can contact the chamber office and talk to Allison on it. On Saturday, October 28th, and this is the one I enjoy, is the 25th Annual Parade of Frights. It's always a kick to see the little ones, how they dress up and go around. I believe last year, we had a participation of something like 800 kids that participated. So hopefully, we can do better than that this year. Again, we'll have Thunder from Lake Elsinore Storm, and he'll lead the kids around and what-have-you. So anyhow, it's always a good Saturday. And I have a special little note for Councilman Green. We have changed the format.
Thank you. Thank you.
It will be a two-man scramble, but a blind draw Calcutta. And I'll get more detail later on that. So you have to pick a good partner and hope you get another two that are...
That was all Larry's idea?
No, no. It wasn't his idea. There's been a request that we change the format a little bit.
Okay.
And also, the Mulligan's only good off the tee and on the fairway, not on the green. Okay?
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a public, can you read the comments relative to public comments, please?
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to the individual being heard by the city council. City council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on an agenda item, your comments will be heard at that time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note, if you are addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow any discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following. Refer the matter back to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give very limited factual response.
Thank you. We have a number of speaker requests, but it's primarily 10.2 and 10.3. But we have one, Jack Wamsley. Do you want to, if public, please?
Thank you, counsel. Mayor, last night, I brought up an issue with the POA that I felt also the city council should get involved with it. Last week, we had one of our members on the golf course have a heart problem and passed away. The response brought something to my attention, and a couple of other people, especially my experience with the fire service, is to maybe set up a response folder for the fire department on the golf course. At the present time, when we get a call, the fire department gets a call, they go to the clubhouse to find out where it is and what's going on. With a response folder, we could have two of them, one for the front nine, one for the back nine, and the closest response that they could take to get to a specific spot with reference to the golf course. An example, hole 17. If we had a heart attack on the tee, they could respond to the street up above. If we had a heart attack on the green on 17, they would have to come in from the road below the hill. All of this could be drawn up in a response folder to help the fire department so that they would know what is the quickest way to get to this specific hole. It takes a little research, takes a little effort on it, but not that much. I've done many of them. I've done about probably a thousand of them for the fire department. And primarily, we were working with commercial, and I would make up a folder on a specific company. We knew where the lights were, we knew where the water was shut off, we knew electrical. And when they got an alarm there, they'd take that folder with them. They knew everything about that particular company. This is a similar recommendation for our service. If we can save time, I think that, or save one life, I think it would be worth the effort. And I talked, like I said, I talked with the POA board last night and made that recommendation. They were very receptive to it. And I would like to make a recommendation that maybe Aaron and Eric get together and put together a program, maybe with Larry Green with his background and experience. And we put together a small committee. We worked with the captains at the 49s, 60s, and 5s, and come up with this response folders that each station would have that. And when they give a response with somebody's down, and this year, we've had two so far, unfortunately, I know the last one didn't live. But anyway, that's my recommendation, and I would be born and happy to help.
Well, Jack, I think that's an excellent idea. And Aaron, if you can get with Eric and put this group together. And Jack said he'd help, but he didn't want to be part of the committee.
We got that down, so we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Staff.
Aaron, just to give you a heads-up, I got a call today from the golf folks and the others that have already got the word, apparently, of last night to try to put together a committee to address very specifically what Jack talked about. And I do want to bring either the shift BC or our station captain in, so we've got fire influence, and then develop it so the guys have got an idea, because we've got a couple of places that are very tough to get into. And when you come in blind, you just don't know where to go. And I think there are some other things that we could do that will be in addition to this, hopefully, to maybe have some better outcomes.
Well, I think the whole situation is we're trying to save time. And you save a lot of time when the response is, they have to go to the clubhouse to see the pro, okay, where's the problem? And if they knew ahead of time, a few questions could be asked, and knew ahead of time, would say, oh, it's hole number nine, they could look at this response folder and find out, hey, you got to go in by the mobiles to get to hole number nine. And those are the type of things that, it's easy to work out, but it takes time, and it's helpful, I'm sure, and the fire department would be receptive to that. And they're always easy to work with, and we can do it.
Jack, I understand, once this plan is done and completed, you're going to give a copy to, like, station 94, and 5, and 60?
All three, all three stations.
And maybe 97, too.
Well, they, you know, they're a long ways off. It doesn't make any difference, but the battalion chief naturally should have a copy of that.
Yeah.
And that can be worked out very easily.
Okay. Thank you, Jack, for your effort. Okay, consent calendar. Stephanie, can you read the statement?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. Items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Okay, is there any motion to approve the consent?
I would like to pull some items.
I'm sorry?
I would like to pull three items.
Okay.
7, 4, 5, and 6.
Okay. Any other? Anybody else? Okay, so can we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, other than 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get a roll call on that? Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Bonner.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Okay, Dawn, you want to make comment on 7.4, please?
Okay, on 7.4, it's discussing combining the city clerk's job with the city manager. And I have a little bit of concern. The city tried that once before when Laurie Moss was the city manager, and it didn't turn out very well. And there are three parts to city government. There's city manager, the city clerk, and the council. And to combine those two, the clerk is there to work with all of us and give us another perspective of what's going on. And I just feel that it's a position that it works with, that position works with city manager and with the council. And I just think that it's a source that I think we should keep.
Dawn, just for your information, this is not the, with Laurie Moss, is not the first time we did that, combined them. We did it with Ariel Hall when she was interim city manager and the city clerk.
That was an interim thing.
Yeah. And one other time also, so it's not a new concert.
Deborah Harrington.
I realize it's not unique. I just personally feel it's not a good idea.
Any comment by the other councilmembers?
I don't have any.
Anybody in the public? Okay, let's, why don't you have a roll call vote on 7.4?
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution 7.4? Excuse me. To vote on 7.4. Is that what it is?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, to adopt, excuse me.
Adopt 2017-16. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, councilmember Aaron Krantz.
We're voting to adopt Resolution 2017-16.
Correct.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Bonner.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-1, with councilmember Hagerty voting no.
Okay, 7.5. Dawn, you want to comment on that, please?
Yeah. I'm a little concerned about issuing a contract for someone who lives out of state. I know that with technology, it's phone call away, but I'm also concerned with the $60 an hour. I think that with Mike Borha and the city manager, that they're pretty much up to speed. I don't see that we need the services of a consultant at $60 an hour very often. And if we do, it would seem to me that we could find someone local for less money than that. There are a gazillion retired city clerks out there. And I don't think it's that important, I don't think the knowledge is that special, that between the city manager and Mike and our city attorney, that there isn't a question that couldn't be answered. It would be more a function of doing research and the work. And I think any consultant could do that, and at a lesser cost than $60.
The only comment I would make is that if we would be hiring somebody else anyway, and we're going to need that, Stephanie's going to be out on leave, we're going to have some, we have Ruby that's pretty busy doing some of the other things also. Ariel Hall has institutional knowledge of our city and our history that we have in the last year have discovered is invaluable. So I would have to vote for having her on a consultant basis.
Contract can be terminated on 30 days' notice.
You're right.
Okay. If you were to hire someone else and find someone else, which hasn't happened as of now, but could.
Yeah.
Betsy, isn't it...
I have to echo what Councilman Warren has said. I think it's extremely important institutional knowledge, and even though we're a small city, in that period that we will need certain things to occur, to bring someone up to speed or the learning curve could be a lot longer than we anticipate. So I'm in favor of keeping her.
Thank you. We're only talking about three months, I believe, that we're going to need her services. And I think I heard somebody say that there's, you know, there's a period of time where there'd be some training that would be necessary. It wouldn't be necessary with Ariel. She already knows where everything is hidden, if it is indeed hidden. But I would certainly be happy, and I don't think that $60 an hour is certainly not that much money, because I don't believe she'll have to spend that much time doing that. So that is my opinion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I tried to talk the last. Betsy, isn't it true that this is a 1099? So it's, the reason it sounds greater than normal is because the 1099 contract is different than being an employee, direct employee.
The previous contract, if I'm right, was $55 an hour, is that right?
Fifty.
Fifty, okay. And the 60 reflects the fact she has to provide all of her own supplies, phone line, et cetera, et cetera. I think the other point about this is, you only pay for it when you use it. And it's not like you're paying a retainer amount. And I don't believe that any services are likely, maybe one and two, an hour or two, to be used between September and December.
Okay, any other comments on the council? Anybody in the public? Roll call, please.
Can I get a motion and second to approve the contract?
Second.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Warren. Mayor Bonner.
Yes.
Motion approved 4-1, with councilmember Hagerty voting no.
Okay, 7.6. Dawn, you want to speak to that?
Should I bother? Okay, purchase of the Jeep. I had an individual call me, and so this is more a question than it is, I'm not, well, I just need to have the question answered. Apparently, this person priced a 4x4 Jeep, 2017, at our Lake Elsinore dealer, and it was $31,000. And they said they offered a better deal for a new 2016 model. And why were we paying that much? And did we put out an RFQ? So I just need those things answered.
For one, the vehicle that we're actually purchasing is not just one that you just get, excuse me, just off the lot. It's actually one that's been specialized and made for the type of terrain, custom-made for the type of terrain that's needed for the BLM area. So it's not just your typical one that you would just find at any dealership. So that's part of the reason why we did it this way. Now, we also did it through the process of the California State Contract Index, because it's, it kind of helps eliminate the competitive bidding process. We can piggyback off the state in order to do that. It just kind of speeds the process along for us.
John, Mike, I'm sorry. You might want to introduce to the public who you are and what your position is, because a lot of people in the public don't.
Mike Borha, Administrative Services Manager for the City of Canyon Lake.
Doing a real good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay? Any other?
That's pretty much it. It's a specialized custom for the type of terrain that we, that's needed out there for the BLM. And we did use a bidding process that allows us to use the state contract as the bidding. So they, actually, the states did all the work for us, so we didn't have to. The one time the state's beneficial for us. And you can see, too, it came well under what we had previously budgeted for, too, as well. So there's a cost saving there initially, too.
I just, I needed it explained.
Yeah, no, no, no problem.
Thank you.
Any other comment by the council? Anybody by the public?
I'll make a motion that we approve 7.6 for the purchase of a city Jeep.
Give him a second. Can roll call, please?
Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Bonner.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think we've gone through the consent calendar. Everything's been approved now? Okay, schedule of future events. Encourage everyone to, every Friday, near-term committee meetings, what have you, are in the Friday flyer in the city business, city section. And also, we have a webpage. So please, and you can always call City Hall. It's 244-2955, and they'll be more than happy. So we want everyone to know when these meetings are happening. We try to give a wide distribution as we possibly can. And the more people that come, the better, or as a city, we're better because of that. So we really encourage people. Thank you. Okay, business items. Okay, we have introduction and first reading of ordinance number 175. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Canyon Lake, setting forth procedures for expediting permitting processing for electrical vehicle charging systems.
Honorable mayor and city council, it's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. My name is Marcella, and I am here representing Jim Barrett, the building official.
And my name's Dave Mitchell. I'm the inspector for the City of Canyon Lake.
Thank you.
Steph is recommending that the council approve ordinance number 175. It's an ordinance of the city council of the City of Canyon Lake, adding chapter 9.26 to the Canyon Lake Municipal Code, setting forth procedures for expedited permitting processing for electric vehicle charging systems. Assembly Bill 1236 mandates expedited plan review timeframes for electric vehicle charging stations. Currently, the Building Department plan review times meet the mandated requirements, so this is not a major issue for the Building Department. As stated earlier, AB 1236 mandates that the city adopt an ordinance that basically acknowledges the required timeframes. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, staff brought forward a similar ordinance for solar plan review, of which we currently are processing quicker than the state mandate. That concludes my staff report. If you guys have any questions.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Could we ask questions, or do we do that?
Let's get a motion in a second, then we'll go into discussion.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Okay, that being said, I don't think you need a roll call for this one.
We have to have discussion.
Just go into motion. We got a motion in a second. Okay?
And there's councilmembers who'd like to have a discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely, okay. Absolutely, absolutely, okay. Okay. Don, do you have a?
Yeah. This states electric vehicle charging systems. Will there be more than one, and have you determined locations yet?
Well, that determines on, it's an approved location. Its proximity is usually close to where they're going to charge a vehicle in the home. It can be interior, it can be exterior.
So this is individual home? This is not a city charging system?
It can be commercial or residential, I believe, yes.
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought this was strictly that we, the city would be providing a charging station.
Be like in your garage, right?
So this is individual, yeah.
It's a self-contained unit, and they provide a power source to it, and it plugs into the vehicle.
So this is just for permitting private use?
Correct.
No, actually, it's more than that. It's commercial businesses, condominiums. It really covers the entire gamut, I think, other than our municipal charging stations. So the question I would have is what kind of turnaround time are we talking about?
Our standard time is 10 days, but we already expedite solar systems, which usually take less than 10 days.
So 10 days is the benchmark?
But that's the maximum, yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is the first reading of this, and we have to have this completed by September the 20th?
30th.
30th, excuse me. How do we do that? Betsy?
We'll have it adopted on the 4th of October, it should be fine.
Pardon me?
We will have it adopted on October 4th, so it's only four to five days later. It should be fine.
I'm glad you asked the question, because I was going to ask the same question.
So did Erin and Stephanie.
You know, we used to have a charging station here in the center. I don't know what happened to it, but it was here someplace. You remember, John? No?
It was at City Hall.
Well, that was just a comment. I don't remember where it was, but we had one. Any other comments from the council? Any from the public? Do we have a roll call?
Councilmember Erin Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I want to have, not a break, but I want a clarification. Vicki Warren is a legal, paralegal person, and I think she has a question about...
No, I just had a comment. First, it's great to see the room full, but in glancing at the speakers, it seems that we don't have as many citizens here as I was hoping we'd have. So my question is actually to the legal counsel, Betsy. We have, we have a lot of non-Canyon Lake citizens speaking on a Canyon Lake issue. Is there anything that precludes them from speaking, or do they need to identify themselves as non-Canyon Lake?
They're treated the same.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And I have a feeling they'll identify themselves anyway.
Okay, so, Betsy, do you want to introduce that? First of all, Stephanie, would you read it, please? 10.2?
This is the consideration impossible introduction of ordinance 176 of the City of Canyon Lake, California, amending the Canyon Lake Municipal Code, Chapter 9.03, Commercial Cannabis Prohibition Ordinance, used to meet the requirements of the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation Safety Act, continuing their prohibition of medical cannabis retail sales, prohibiting all cultivation, delivery, distribution, manufacturing, processing, and testing, and removing the, removing the ban on mobile dispensaries within the city.
Betsy, you want to introduce them, please?
Yes. I think it's okay to go ahead, because I don't know that you will end up going ahead with the ordinance. Let me tell you why it's in front of you, and the timing, and a little bit of the background. And I think you heard a little bit about this at your last meeting. Since the Compassionate Use Act, which is, and the medicinal, medical marijuana program, and particularly since the adoption of Prop 64 in November of 2016, the law regarding what is now called cannabis, no longer supposed to be called marijuana, in California, has evolved very rapidly. You may recall that prior to November, you put in place an urgency ordinance, which adopted certain regulations on the indoor cultivation of, called adult-use recreational cannabis, and banned personal outdoor cultivation, other than as allowed in a greenhouse. As you know, that left outstanding what happens about recreational cannabis. Since then, SB 94 itself was a big bill. Since then, or Prop 64 was a large proposition, however, since then, there's been SB 94, which sets in place a statewide licensing program for both medicinal and adult-use facilities, distribution, processing, cultivation, manufacturing, and testing. I think I got all the pieces. It is intended to run the gamut. I think it's intended a little bit, look a little bit perhaps like wine regulation. Assigns the Department of Consumer Affairs, which now has the Bureau of Cannabis Control. They are the main licensing authority, although there are licensing pieces for edibles done through the Food and Agriculture Department. In the course of these changes, the city's ability to regulate has been confirmed. And the reason this is in front of you now is to get the process going, to see what you want to do. The regulations, the permanent regulations put out by the various state agencies won't be out until 2019. There may be interim regulations in November of this year. But what really is going to happen is if the state moves to issue temporary licenses, they will be relying on each local jurisdiction to tell them, did you ban it, or did you regulate it? And if you regulate it, you need to have an ordinance in place. For example, a number of places are considering medicinal, I'm going to call them retail facilities, they're not really called dispensaries any longer. It's called a type 10 license. And that kind of regulation, which can be relatively detailed, some people are doing it with a conditional use permit, needs to be in place before January 1st, when the first temporary license is issued, or you're going to be relying on the state to regulate. There are other cases where you might want to rely on the state. I don't, I don't believe that we have actually gone through with you. This is what SB 94 says, this is what you could do, this is what you can't do, because it's still changing. There's three pending amendments to it. We'll know in a couple of weeks what happens. So the questions in front of you, we, Erin and I wanted to present you with something to look at.
What page are you on, please?
I am on packet page 385, and I am now turning to packet page 389. What we did is provide you with an ordinance which bans, continues the bans that you have in place now on medicinal cannabis and everything except personal cultivation. This doesn't touch what is required by Prop 64. And I want to tell you, I'm not sure this ordinance is perfect, because the field is still changing, but it's something for you to look at, to think about, what do we want to do? We've also, I believe, given you a sample from Palm Desert, where they had in place, and this is not under current law, this is under past law, medicinal cannabis, one medicinal cannabis dispensary. So the questions are, do you want to continue a ban? And a number of places are rethinking their position, some are. Do you want to allow any retail sales, medicinal, adult use? Do you want to allow manufacturing or distribution within the city? Do you want to ban cultivation, which I think for you makes some sense, because I'm not sure people will cultivate it? Well, indoors, indoors. Do you want to consider a nonprofit license system and some other kinds of questions? We can, I will do my best to answer as many questions as I can about this. The last time we presented this, you had a number of people who were in the business of running these facilities, who provided additional information to you for your consideration. A little bit more about the money that goes into it. A number of places have gone forward with facilities because it provides them with income. If you ban cultivation in any form, you are not allowed to participate in the state, the possible distribution of state money flowing from what is about, a total of about a 25% tax on retail sales and cultivation combined. However, a number of places, I think about 77, we looked it up the other day, have adopted an excise tax on adult-use cannabis. You cannot tax medical, and the state does not tax medical cannabis. So they're relying on an additional tax, and I don't know what percentages they are, to bring income in, to deal with law enforcement needs, permit, you know, enforcement costs, implementation costs, plus permitting fees. For some places, that has been successful, Desert Hot Springs, Sacramento, a couple of other places. Others, it's too new to tell. I'll do my best to answer questions.
Okay, do we need a motion to introduce and hold our first reading of ordinance number 176?
Don't we have to answer the questions first?
I think you need to talk about the questions.
We need to get the questions, because I think that's, that's the fundamental direction of whether this ordinance is going to go to either be prohibitive or inclusive of some of the...
And I'm not, we're not recommending that you adopt this tonight. We're recommending you talk about it, but sometimes it's hard to talk about something without a sample in front of you. And I would also perhaps recommend that even absent a motion, you waive your rules procedure and take public comment. I'm not sure you're going to end up with a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's more what I was thinking.
Okay. Who's going to start? Council?
Who wants to start?
I'll start. This is a very interesting subject, which I've spent a lot of time on. And there's a lot of information out there right now from our states that have been doing this for over four years. And there's a lot of articles written, both by the Washington Post, the New York Times, the Brookings Institute, the Colorado Tribune, of the impacts of legalized marijuana on lots of different things in their systems. You can find these, and you can Google a lot of different aspects, everything from health to criminal, law enforcement impact, accidents. But what I found, just using their examples, is that a lot of the things that they were pointing out that were going to happen because of the legalization has not happened. The impacts that they talked about, matter of fact, Washington Post, after this lengthy article, said marijuana has had little impact so far on the various public health issues as it was pointed out. Now, there have been problems, don't get me wrong. There's a big article put in by the University of Colorado in Denver, at Aurora. That's the largest hospital in Colorado. It sees 2,000 patients a week. They have had an increase in edible poisonings. Edible poisonings, if you seem to, see the theme that goes through these articles, is that the, the, is it THD?
THC.
THC, I was going to get it right, is all over the, all over the map. And so they're trying to come up with some regulatory processes, also child-proof tampering and those kind of things. They have had impact there. What I found interesting is one of the articles, the governor of Colorado Today, and it's Hickenlooper, I guess that's, I'm sorry if I'm catching your name wrong, but the governor was adamantly opposed to the legalization of marijuana in the state of Colorado. Four years later, he said, I guess their experiment has worked, meaning that the things that they thought was going to happen didn't happen. There are problems, don't get me wrong, but the huge wave that we've seen of the projected criminal activities and other things that have occurred, another thing was brought up, that more teens would be involved in marijuana use than with the legalization. What they found is, and I'm using Colorado now, and Washington's got a very similar study, because all these are numerical numbers, and you can look at any of them, but they found that the teen use of marijuana was about mid-range for Colorado, meaning the nationwide use. And it didn't go up, it didn't go down, it varied hardly anything. So that was kind of out the door. The other problem we've got in Colorado is they've got recreational use from outer staters that seem to end up, they come in, they get overdosed, and they impact the health system. I was in Golden, Colorado, and I had the opportunity to talk to several people there. And it was quite interesting, their view. They felt it wasn't a problem. Most of Colorado is a non-smoking area in public areas. That means if you're going to use marijuana, it's got to be in an edible form. And so they're really trying to focus on that. There have been some issues, and there have been problems. As an example, children with poisoning, they had, in 2013, they had 25. Now, this is an entire year. The following year, it went up to 47. So there has been an increase. So they're, they're trying to address that by packaging and some other things. I've also done some research here, looking at, talking to some very interesting Canyon Lakers, both from a very conservative viewpoint and from a very liberal standpoint, all sides. And the general consensus is that their view has changed, and that it's a legal substance. It should be regulated as alcohol, tobacco, and if it has medicinal purposes, it should be made available to our citizens in a controlled area. Whether we will make it approved or not, those who want to buy will buy in our surrounding communities. So I think if we're going to be proactive and not turn our heads and think that this is going to go away, it's legal now. And so I would rather be moving in a positive direction of trying to control it than let it become rampant and out of control.
One additional comment. There's a variety of provisions regarding packaging that are particularly for edibles, and particularly in proximity of children, that they've included in SB 94. I don't know if they're modeled in Colorado or not.
Vicki, if you're all right, I'd like to have you and I speak after we get a council. Don, you want to speak now, please?
I spent a year researching. Before this all came about, I attended a seminar that had four pro-marijuana and one against marijuana, that were speakers. And there were a number of law enforcement people at the seminar, firefighters, public officials. And even though four of the five said it was a wonderful thing, and all we need, if they're regulate, this is the big selling point, if you regulate it, you get rid of all the problems. And when you talk to law enforcement, that isn't true. If you go talk to some of the police chiefs around the city, in various cities, including Los Angeles, Long Beach, Paris, I've spoken to all of those and read their reports. They don't like it, they don't want it, and it's a bad thing. I met with the head of Pediatrics for the Portland Children's Hospital, and she said since the legalization of marijuana in Oregon, they've had a 300% increase in children, babies and small children, being brought into the hospital in comas, semi-comatose from ingestion. And marijuana's done nothing but get... And marijuana's done nothing but get, cannabis has done nothing but get stronger since then. Now, with the getting it into an oil state, there's significantly more danger, if you talk to firemen, with explosions in houses and people being badly burned or killed. It's far more dangerous than it used to be, as far as cultivating it and processing it in your home. I personally, we're small, it's not like people can't get access to it, right up the road, right down the road, either direction within a few miles, anyone that wants to use cannabis can get it. So, it's not like we're in an isolated area where people would have a problem obtaining it. So, I don't buy the argument that you're depriving people of the use and making it difficult for them to get it. I just personally think with the law enforcement I've talked to and the research that I have done, that we would be doing a disservice to our city by allowing dispensaries and legalizing. I think the ordinance we have is a good one. Anyone, if you want to use cannabis, it's legal, you can grow it in your house, you can go up or down the hill and get it very easily. I don't think we need to provide it in the city. And I've spoken with law enforcement people in Colorado, I was in Aspen, and I would say, when you say teenagers, I think out of, I spoke with the doctor that works in the hospital there, and their largest ingestion of patients was teenagers with overdose, you know, they were, had taken too much, or young children that had ingested too much. It's, it's not a safe, happy thing. Alcohol isn't, I mean, if, yeah, they compare it with, oh, it's just the same as alcohol. Well, alcohol isn't good. We don't need another not-good thing in our city. And I just believe that we're not depriving anybody if they want to use it. And I think we're saving ourselves a lot of extra cost. We cannot afford to have extra policemen. And every case in Colorado, they've had to almost double the police force to regulate, you know, to take care of those driving under the influence, and that the increase in accidents has been significant, and careless driving. We can't afford that here. We can't hire extra people. So, we can't control if they're going to drive through, but I sure don't think we need to provide it in our tiny little community here.
Thank you, Dawn. Jordan?
Excuse me. I'm probably going to repeat what I said last month, I don't know how many people heard that, but, and I don't know who the people are that are out here, so maybe this is a good time to address it once again. The first thing that I commented on was that I was aware of the fact that there were going to be dispensaries very soon and very close, and that we should certainly take advantage of the opportunity. Dawn just confirmed what I said, and she said we can, we can go down the street and get it. I say it, whatever it is, I don't, I'm not, I don't use the product, so I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight personally. But I think that there's only one way that this can be successful, and that's to have the ability as a city to control what goes on and how the sales are handled. If something like this doesn't work, we can close it down. It's not something that's, it's a lifetime guarantee that one of these dispensaries is going to stay open. But the black market is going to continue, and the black market, from what I understand, is not the safest place to purchase this product. And I know there's going to be a lot of rebuttal out there, and I'm happy to hear it, because I'm not that well-versed or convinced of what the product will do, but I do, though, I've had some experience with friends of mine that have used it for medicinal purposes, and they're still here because of that. Now, that's just one example. If it's not good, then somebody's going to have to prove that to be the case. I don't, you know, we know about all the accidents that take place. If you drink a beer and drive, you may get into an accident. If you walk across the street, you can get into an accident. And if you're smoking or ingesting marijuana, I guess you can get into an accident as well. But those, that's what's, you know, that's what life is all about. I do believe that, well, I'm sure you all read in the paper, there was a grand opening in Paris of a, of a new dispensary. As I said last month, they were coming closer, and I think there's another one that's going to even be closer than that. Why shouldn't we capitalize on the ability to regulate and tax? You know, I've been on this council for nine years now, and I've ended up on the winning end of most of the arguments to save the city. And it was a lot of work, but we managed to do it, and we're still here, and the city is functioning quite well, and I think with additional revenue, we can certainly be here for quite some time. It may not be popular with everybody, but I think I said before, you know, prohibition wasn't popular either, but it doesn't, it's no, it doesn't take much skill to walk into the supermarket and buy a six-pack of beer, nobody condemns you for that. I personally would like to see the city have the ability to collect some additional revenue. And as I say, this may not be a popular decision, but I'm very prejudiced for the city of Canyon Lake, and I want to save every opportunity that we can have to earn some money or to make some money, is something that I would be a proponent of at all times. So, I think that concludes what I had to say.
Thank you, Jordan. Becky?
You'll all get your turn, I promise. I have some questions, and I'll have some questions for, for you as you come up, too. So, I agree, we should have this be a really open. The reason I asked about the citizen versus non-citizen, we're a small community, and we're very sheltered, in a way. So, I would like to, as, you know, as you introduce yourselves, it would help me to know if you're a citizen, so that I know if you're speaking as a Canyon Laker, but I also want all the Canyon Lakers to hear the news from the outside, from people that may be bringing in more experience and, and more information that we don't have within our little community. So, I think it would help. But anyway, that's later, we get our turn first. I have some questions, Betsy, as much as you can answer. Is it possible to regulate outdoor use, as in, I, I think Larry mentioned something about edible-only, so that there's no smoking of it in front of children?
It's all, well, the answer is yes. To a certain extent, it's already regulated, because cannabis use falls under your no-smoking regulations and under those of the Clean Air Act. Now, it falls under yours, not, I want to add the POAs.
Right.
So, so, yes, you can look at those, and you can look at requirements such as those you've placed in the personal cultivation ordinance. You can, yes, regulate cultivation, location, et cetera.
Okay.
And as you talk about this, think about, as you talk about regulating or banning, talk about the various pieces of the process, because you, you take it piece by piece.
Right.
For example, we, we listened to a league seminar on Thursday, one of the things they said, and I'm not saying it works for Canyon Lake, I'm giving you an example, was, "A testing laboratory may not even have the product there, it may on some occasions, but it's a testing laboratory. Do you really want to ban a testing laboratory when all you have to do is rely on state regulations? Does it bring in money? Yes, to a certain extent, because people work there and they pay property taxes." So, you need to look at it piece by piece, and I want to remind you again, you don't have to decide tonight. But you, like councils all, all across California are talking about the same thing this month.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we'll be deciding tonight, I'm sorry, but I think that there's, there's so much of this, and it's so many little parts that make up the whole, because this is a reality, we can't just turn our heads and say that this is no longer something we have to face. This is it, and we have a moment in history that we can try to do it as right as possible. And I think that's what we need to figure out before 2018.
There are also places that are talking about, for example, a temporary ban until you see what happens. They're talking about a business license tax on those who deliver into the city, not, not banning them, of course, which you can't really do, but a business license tax. They're talking about tax measures, opening something and being contingent on tax measure, a variety, just a variety of approaches.
Yeah, our situation, as far as delivery goes, is quite unique, because...
Yes, it is, you've got to be phoned in.
Right.
So, you know who's coming in.
We know who's coming in, and who regulates that and who watches that. So, I have a couple more questions. I had a question about the, one of the, one of the questions you posed was, "Does the council want to continue the ban, to ban cultivation except for personal cultivation? If we ban at all, we have no access to the 25%. Is that, is that correct?"
Do you ban cultivation at all?
In any way?
Yeah. Now, whether you'll ever see a portion of the 29, 25%, I don't know.
Right.
But that is one argument.
Okay. Do we have, in all of our, in all of our wanderings and all of our studies, have we, has anybody ever been able to say whether the income from a retail facility outweighs what goes out in permits and so forth?
I don't, I don't think it, what I, what I saw was, state of Colorado, which I was kind of surprised compared to the state of Washington, their revenue streams, Washington was almost, it was 236 their first year, 236 million versus 144, and they have increased the licensing, which has increased revenue coming back into the jurisdictions that have allowed it. The problems that have occurred that I read, and the second-largest city is Colorado Springs, they do not allow sellable marijuana in their city. But what happened is they found a loophole in the law, so now they have cannabis clubs that you still get your marijuana, and their citizens are going to the borders and buying it, because it's, it's illegal. So, it's the same scenario we'd have here, if we say no, they'll get it someplace. The illegal use, or the illegal making of marijuana is going to be there, it's black market. What Councilman Hagerty was referring to is the making of the oil, the honey oil, using butane as a solvent, very volatile, very dangerous. They have had burns in Colorado because of that, but that is on the illegal side. Those are the folks that are doing it for personal profit, profit, and not on a commercial basis, regulated by the state. And if you look at our regulations, our state has tried to be, learned from the lessons of Washington, Colorado, Oregon now, and obviously Alaska and other states have jumped on board, with a board that will control it, and allows jurisdictions for us to control it, and also have a revenue stream if that comes about. One way or the other, whether we approve it or not, people that are using marijuana on a recreational basis will buy it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dawn, I think, wants to say something.
You had an answer to that question?
Just a couple of points. One, I was talking with a fellow who was one of the pro-marijuana people on this seminar, I was talking to him afterwards, and he was going through, "Oh, it's going to be controlled, and it's going to be licensed, and it's all going to be wonderful." And I said, "Tell me something." "Oh, and you get your taxes from it, and, you know, all the politicians are all excited about getting extra money." And I sort of laughed, and I said, "Well, have you figured out yet what the proportion, because growers will have a lot of California regulations on their growing process, a lot of licensing fees, a lot of fees for things and taxes for things." And I said, "It seems to me like all that's going to do is drive the underground market, because the costs will go up, won't it?" And he said, "Yeah." I said, "They have to reflect all those extra fees and licensing costs and taxes." "Yeah." "Okay, well, if they don't have to pay that, if they can buy it on the street for less, wouldn't it make sense that they probably would if they could?" And he went, "Yeah." He said, "That's one of our problems." He says, "You're right." So, all of this extra money, and I also talked with the police chief in a city in Colorado who said, "Yeah, we have an income stream, but they don't show you a comparison of the added costs for hospitalization and for law enforcement and for fire that have increased." So, it's taken a big nip out of that big profit that they advertise. So, that's, it's, at this point, I don't know what the honest level is, because, you know, they talk about all this money they're making, but they don't talk about the additional costs required because of it.
Okay.
And just one other little thing that occurred to me, for those who say, "Well, it's, you know, it's no worse than alcohol." Well, I have a grandson who has, he was a friend of his that's now smoking pot every day at school. He can put, what do they call it, reefers? I don't know. Anyway, he can put a couple of cigarettes in his pocket, nobody knows the difference. If he was an alcoholic, he couldn't put a half a dozen beers in his pocket or in his locker, because it would be seen. So, it's much easier to overuse and abuse marijuana than it is alcohol as far as youth is concerned. That's just an extra little thought.
Thank you.
I have just a couple more things, I promise. But one thing I, I do want to say is, I happen to agree that, that no matter how many dispensaries are open, there's still going to be people growing in their yard and going under, doing the things that they want to do anyway. I'm not worried about that. I'm also not all that excited about this as being a revenue stream, because I don't know that that's necessarily a reality at this point, especially because of all the federal regulations. But my concern is that we have a moment in time to regulate this for our citizens and to do it correctly, and so that's really what I'm focusing on. But I do have one question, again, for Betsy, I'm sorry. So, let's say we have a grand opening of a retail dispensary, retail operation, what did you call it?
I'm calling it a retail facility.
Okay.
But what the real name for it is, is a commercial cannabis activity with a type A-10 license.
Okay, so if we get a type A-10 license operation in town center here, and it turns out that it's just a terrible thing, we've got all the, all the horrible nightmares that everybody predicted come true, how fast could we rescind such a thing? You had mentioned that we can close it down.
Well, like any code enforcement matter, it's not immediate unless, I mean, unless there was some really bad thing that happened, like a, you know, fire or a health and safety issue, when in fact, you could close it down, down at least temporarily. Remember that to operate, we'll use this as an example, not, the M-licens is the medicinal. You have to have, you may, you have to have a city that allows it, or county. You have to have a city license, you have to have the city certified to the Bureau of Cannabis Control that you have that, and there's process for that. And you have to have a state license, and I have to say that the state licensing facility in SB 94, which isn't even the regulations, is pretty rigorous. I mean, the state wants to monitor this and enforce it, because they get money from it.
Right.
Best incentive for the state there is. So, you could eventually either correct it or shut it down, it might not be overnight. Now, that said, I don't think, I mean, as a condition of your permit, you will probably seek indemnification. Think of it like getting a CUP for a business.
Right.
Okay? Maybe, I don't know, think of it like a liquor store or something, although there are different regulations about liquor stores. You would, you would go through a CUP process, and you could regulate it that way, the state would also be regulating, and so maybe a bar is a better way to think about it, because you've got ABC, you have layers of regulation, you have to coordinate between them. Would it be immediate? Not necessarily. Do you have the ability to do that? Yes. Do you have the ability to go to the state and ask them to do it? Yes. So...
Okay.
Yeah?
So, one last question from me, then it's, then it's the mayor's turn, and then it's your turn. In all of this that we have to consider, where do the federally, federal regulations, I hear about that they're closing down facilities in Paris almost as fast as they open them, that there's been federal closures of, so I'm wondering, where does that fit in?
Well, the current... Well, the current administration has not taken the same position as the past administration. This just not comes as shock to anyone. And it is unclear where the federal, where the federal regulation lies. To the best of my knowledge, the federal government has not challenged what California is doing. The provisions of the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, Prop 94, Proposition 64, some of them, some of the restrictions in it remain in place only until such time as federal regulations, federal regulations change and allow certain kinds of use. So I guess, I guess it is within the bounds of possibility that there could be a federal push to shut all this down. But I think at this point, it's more form over substance. And there's other stuff going on.
Well, they would have to go after Nevada, California.
Go after a whole bunch of different places and there's other ways to use your resources.
I just might point out one other thing. This is primarily a cash business and very difficult to monitor and regulate what their actual cash intake is. Assuming that they're totally honest or not. So it would be very difficult to track that we're getting all the taxes. There are a lot of costs involved with reviewing, checking, fire support, police report, all of the inspections.
I think you, I think what you're going to hear when you hear from the audience is that this isn't, this isn't the guy in his, you know, garage selling on street corners. This is big business. This is the source of large investment that's taking the place of real estate. Yeah, I mean, these are, these are business operations, but you'll hear it from them.
Wait, wait, he can wait. Wait in his garage?
Okay, I'm done.
Well, I went through the ordinance 176 and underlined a number of things, but I think most, if not all, has already been covered, so I'm not going to repeat that. But I don't only just live, listen to the city council members, which I obviously do, but also talk to other mayors. And in July, the end of July, we went to meet the mayors. And two things came out really ringing. One was Tim Walker. He's the mayor of Willamar. And he and his wife were in Seattle, went to a theater, and at the start of the show, the governor of Washington got up and told about all the problems they were having in the state of Washington. And then a person got up there, could hardly stand up and was very under influence and trying to explain why it's a bad idea. And it really rang on the Willamar City Council. The other one was interesting, Sam Lucinto. And I almost, it's not humorous, but it's just unbelievable to me. They, after over a year of going back and forth, they've decided to allow it to be growing commercially on agricultural land because it's classified agricultural land, okay? But then their citizens cannot buy it. And another mayor said, wait a minute, let me see if I understand this. You're telling me my citizens could come over to your city where you're getting the commercial and buy it? And he said, yeah, well, that's the way it is. Well, that's not going to be, that's not going to be flying around City Canyon Lake, I don't think. That's pretty silly. Okay, so we got, Jack, we got another forum. We've got seven people. Everyone has three minutes. I would ask if, everyone has three minutes. If that's, we're not going to slow it down. But I ask you if not possible not to repeat the same thing seven times. So if you got a different aspect to it, I would appreciate that. So, Jack, let's, let some people that's already signed up first, let them first, and then we'll get you at the end.
If you've turned one in for this one.
It's a general item.
Yeah, so turn in a slip.
Hey, Jack, add this to this one. Yeah, just add it to this one. Okay, this is just the ordinance came and the requests were given. So it's not, there's no other, other than the first and the second, the third through seven. The first one, and I apologize if I pronounce a name wrong, is Carla Van Bergen.
Van Bargen.
Bargen?
Van Bargen.
Van Bargen? I was going to say, wait a minute, it looks like two people.
She has a form of, did you fill out a form? But we were going to go. I'm Carly Van Bargen, and my sister Katie Johnson is here, and we're the owners of JDI Dance Company in the city of Canyon Lake. We're located on Railroad Canyon Road at the Canyon Fitness Center. I'm also here with Dave Garcia, who's the owner of the Canyon Fitness Center. And we're representing JDI Dance Company, our clientele, and the Canyon Fitness Center. We have been made aware that the building that sits at the front of the Canyon Fitness Center parking lot will become a cannabis retail shop if this was to pass from the person who's leasing it. At JDI, we currently have 750 children enrolled from the ages one and a half to 18 years old that attend weekly from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at night. We also have a group of homeschool children that spend their weekdays at JDI and work on their studies between dance classes and our homeschool room that we have provided for them. At Canyon Fitness Center, they provide daycare for their clientele while they work out. We're not only family businesses, but Canyon Lake is a family community. And if this building was to become a cannabis retail shop, it would be the first business you would see as you enter the city of Canyon Lake. This building is only 100 feet from the JDI entrance, and it's located right next to where all of our parents pull in to drop off their children and pick them up. Whether it be a cannabis retail shop or a liquor store in the building, neither would be conducive to the environment that JDI has created for all these children, which is a positive role model and learning center for all of them. We all believe in the freedom and right to open a business, but even, where do we go next? Sorry, guys. But even the sponsors of Proposition 64 had common sense when they put a provision in that prohibits marijuana dispensaries from opening near a school. We are asking the city council to please consider our community, our businesses, and most importantly, the 750 children that attend JDI Dance Company when discussing this matter. Thank you.
Okay, next in order would be Mark Clark.
Good evening, council members, and no mayor. Lost the mayor.
That's okay. For a moment I am, until he gets back.
So, Ms. Warren, you wanted to know who is a Canyon Lake resident, who is not?
Just curious.
I am not. I speak on behalf of a parent and a child who goes to JDI Dance Company. I have been a Canyon Lake resident in the past and have actually looked to coming back to Canyon Lake in the future. But one of the things that bothers me today, and I'll give you a little history of mine, I have three minutes. I normally talk a lot, so I'll probably be 22 minutes, so I'll try to cut this short. I've been in law enforcement for over 20 years, city of San Bernardino. I've done every position possible in the city of San Bernardino, whether it be drug enforcement, gangs. And I could tell you that legalizing it, we already know is done. That's a done deal. But you guys bringing it forward is not going to help your city. We, as a city in San Bernardino, have had years and years and years of fighting this before it was legalized. And for us to even shut down a facility would cost about $100,000 for us to shut down a facility. That was the last time we shut down a large-scale facility on Kendall Avenue. The cost to shut it down, the resources that you're going to need are exponential if you guys do go forward to push this, have it in these areas in your city. One of the issues I see with placing it near JDI Dance Company, yes, there are children there, yes, my child goes there. My child is here tonight. The provision under Prop 64 is 600 feet. So if we're within 100 feet, obviously, we're way under that provision. So if you're going to enact it, you're going to have to have definitely some regulations that you're going to have to place as a council, more than just go, yeah, let's do it and let's generate revenue. I appreciate some of the stuff Mr. Green said, but the fact is, is that Colorado crime has increased exponentially in Colorado. Mr. Hagerty, Ms. Hagerty, the fact is, is that you're right on so many bases. Law enforcement is going to have to increase. The costs are going to come toward you, the city council.
Can I comment on your comments?
Go for it.
I look at their stats.
Do I get extra minutes?
Larry, Larry, let him get three minutes, please.
I could tell you in San Bernardino, it doesn't work. And for San Bernardino, it's illegal, and we have ordinances in place where we do not allow. But there are 20 dispensaries in our city currently. It costs us too much money to regulate them to shut them down because as soon as we shut it down, they just open up down the street somewhere else. So that could be the issue you guys run into in the future. Will that happen? I don't know. You're going to have to see that as it progresses forward. But the amount of money you're going to save, the crime rate that comes to it, you're right, you can go to another city right now and buy it in Paris. And they're trying to regulate there. And I've worked with the mayor of Paris, Mayor Vargas, and seen some of the things that they have. And it's not working there, and it's not going to work for you. So I hope you really consider this, take the time to think about not only the community that you have, but the parents that come to that community. All right, thank you. Sir?
Thank you.
Nothing?
Okay. Okay, Janet Johnson? Oh, okay.
She was the moral support.
Okay. Okay, Nick Morrow?
How are we doing?
Thank you.
So we have San Bernardino law enforcement, retired LA County law enforcement. I'm a consultant, I'm an expert witness for the LA County Superior Courts on cannabis cultivation, medical marijuana, a lot of stuff. I was part of the Prop 64 campaign. I frequently speak to city councils and other government entities about regulation, what the pros and cons are. A lot of stuff that I'm hearing is stuff that we covered during the Prop 64 campaign, talking about DUIs increasing and all that, which is a neat little thing if you look at the actual numbers in the state of Colorado. The population of Colorado fits neatly inside LA County. And when they had legalization, they had an increase in DUI cannabis. Huge increase, nine total cases. But the key thing into that is that the public education that happened as a result of the legalization campaign led to public awareness. They had 1,000 fewer DUIs overall. So if you had a program that produced 1,000 fewer DUIs in LA County, they'd throw you a parade. So make sure that the stats that you look at, the dangers that you look at are recent. Colorado made every mistake under the sun with their edibles, and that's why they have the problems they have. They've gone to fix those problems with labeling, packaging, access, that type of stuff. California, we made all the mistakes with Prop 215, we fixed those. Everybody learned from us. Now we're learning from Colorado and Washington. And so the framework that we have for Prop 64 and the medical and recreational framework is a lot better than everybody else has. What we have now is, well, five years ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. City councils just didn't even know where to start. It was such an enormous undertaking. Now we have state regulations. A state license can't be issued unless there's local permit. So you have a choice to ban it completely. You lose out on tax revenues, which is significant. You also lose out on community reinvestment funds, which is that part of that 25 percent. You're correct that the end result, the end money, hasn't been calculated yet. But Colorado has done a lot of the similar thing. They actually had to give a refund of tax revenues at one point. So there hasn't been a police department that's gone bankrupt over marijuana enforcement. So there may be additional law enforcement resources required. However, what you're talking about is a regulated industry. And if people abide by the regulations, there is a zero increase in law enforcement expenditures. It's the lack of regulation and the black market is what costs the money. The explosions you were talking about, the BHO butane honey oil labs, that isn't commercially regulated and monitored BHO production. That's illegal production. So I'm urging you to take steps, take your steps slowly, use the power of your local control to be able to fine tune the state regulations and go forward reasonably. Thank you.
Thank you. This one I'm going to probably do not very well. Adam Lavoinet? I'm sorry. Can you pronounce your name so I don't do it?
Lavoinet. Yes, council mayor. I'm here tonight, I'm actually not a resident. I'm a CPA in Irvine, California. I'm here to kind of explain to you what I see from, as a CPA, in the numbers. I currently, my firm, we currently have over 600 clients. I didn't really have any business to do in this industry. I didn't want to deal with it. However, I met real businessmen that wanted to do it right, pay the taxes correctly, and generate revenue for the cities. And so, you know, now I represent the one licensed shop in Paris, and I represent two in Santa Ana. And we track every single dollar. All the cash, yes, I know it's a cash business, however, we have every receipt, everything is real-time POS system. You can, the council, the police, everybody can have access to it at any time. And we, we've never missed a tax filing, we've never missed a tax payment. Everything has been correctly done. And just from what I've seen in Santa Ana with, I believe, 17 shops now? 17 shops, and each one is generating between, anywhere between $12,000 to $17,000 a month in just city taxes. That's not including state taxes. So there's a lot of revenue that, you know, and I would only ask that the city would use some of these funds for public education. That is one major thing that I would ask of the city. But, yeah, basically, our firm, we're responsible for reporting every dollar, and we make sure that the city gets it on time. And so that's what I'm here to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I like the first name here, Randall Longwith.
I usually go by Randy, but I think I did write Randall on there. My name is Randall Longwith, and I'm also not a resident of Canyon Lake. However, I do represent a resident of Canyon Lake. His name is Travis Campbell. And he's also, he is interested actually in operating a retail center in the city of Canyon Lake. He's a father, he is a respected member of this community. And he's also a best practice operator in the cannabis business today. Mr. Campbell currently has two separate facilities in California, one of them in Santa Ana, one of them in, one of them in Santa Ana and one of them in Paris, which is the one that we just spoke of, which was just in the newspaper, which is the first regulated cannabis facility, retail facility in the Inland Empire. And we're very proud of that. And when I say that, I'm talking about someone who is an absolute best practice operator because we can look at the past because we know he's had a facility in Santa Ana, which is regulated and licensed and pays his taxes. And if you could see that facility and you could see what is around that facility and what has happened in not only the facility that he took over, but the area around that facility and how it's improved that, you would be amazed. There was a question or a moment with regard to whether or not, if this is regulated, whether or not you would see people smoking on the streets or something like Colorado where you only can have edibles. The reality of Prop 64 is that it has made public consumption, all public consumption, illegal. So you cannot smoke it even if you, if you don't have a cigarette ban in the city or in a specific location. Prop 64 specifically says that you cannot smoke outdoors, so you can't do it. You can't ingest outdoors. I think the reality of this, and we'll talk about income and all of these certain things, and whether or not it in fact is going to bring income into the city of Canyon Lake. There are a lot of offsets. I know that the officer from San Bernardino indicated that the price and the cost of closing down an illegal dispensary is about $100,000, and he's right. Now, the reality of that is that's actually an offset of the cost that is going to be ultimately generated as it pertains to regulating this market, right? Right now, we have a cost that's already there for law enforcement. And that cost is to go after and to police and to shut down any illegal facilities. The reality is, once you regulate this industry, you don't see that, and you definitely don't see that to the extent that we have it right now. see that to the extent that we have it right now. And I can give you an example. The city of Santa Ana recently regulated cannabis facilities. They went from 100 illegal facilities in Santa Ana to almost zero today. That's a savings of $100,000, if those numbers are correct, per facility. But you know what happened once they regulated? They left town. They left town. And I'll close with this. First of all, I think that all of these numbers that we're talking about, and these statistics that we're talking about, I think the city attorney was correct when she said, what needs to happen is to analyze all of these statistics and all of these numbers, and I think that's your job. At the very end of this, this is a safety issue. This is a safety issue, and we talk about black market, we talk about what happens when you regulate versus not regulating. I would submit to you that regulating this industry today is a safer alternative than not regulating it. And the way that you come to that, and I know, Ms. Hagerty, that if you speak to individuals, it's almost like watching a football game sometimes. And you'll say, if you're for this team or for the other team, sometimes when you see that foot out of bounds, depending upon what team you're on, you're gonna interpret that as inside or outside bounds.
Randy, I really don't, I asked you to summarize because you've been well over three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. But that's what I would ask you to do, and that's, which is, if you analyze and scrutinize the studies that are within this industry, I think that you will find it is a safer alternative for this city to regulate it. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you an employee of any cannabis industry? Do they pay you to promote cannabis?
No, what I am is, I'm an attorney, and I also run a consulting group with regard to cannabis facilities. I work with a lot of cities to help them come to these decisions.
Because I think I talked to you, and you were...
You have, absolutely.
Yeah.
You've emailed back and forth.
Yeah, you were representing some cannabis growers at the time.
Yes, absolutely.
I just, I felt that.
You're right.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica Sweet?
Hello, Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me a moment to speak. I am a nutrition coach, certified nutrition coach. I am not from this city, start with that. I'd like to address a couple of things first. Firstly, I'd like to address the comparison between cannabis and alcohol. Alcohol is a neurotoxin, it is toxic and has no medicinal value, and cannabis is not such, it's not toxic. Nobody dies from cannabis consumption. Yes, there are overdoses where there is a lack of education, and that's where I work in the industry. I work in tandem with a physician, we do house calls only for the severely and terminally ill. We're basically in palliative care, we work with people in memory care facilities, and we work with people who cannot just drive down the road to obtain their medicine. They need it brought to them, they need delivery services in order because either they're confined to a facility, or they're confined to their homes. And so we go to their homes for three or four hours and spend time educating them, and usually their families as well, because many of these patients have dementia and cannot retain the information, and they need their caretakers to provide their care and their medicine for them. So sometimes the caretaker will go to a facility, to a, I'm sorry, I forgot what the term was, a retail facility, to obtain the medicine and then administer it to them. Or they will call a delivery service. So these people do need it in a more local way, they need it close to their homes or delivered to them because they are not able to go out anymore to obtain their medicine. I'd also like to reiterate the BHO thing, those butane extraction accidents happen when it's happening illegally. So regulation can reduce or eliminate that problem. As far as packaging to children goes, that packaging is being changed. The problem is that a lot of the packaging, to be cutesy, looks like candy, or something that's very attractive to children, and that's being eliminated. So it is going more medical. I don't know that much about recreational, my business is medical. I'm not really concerned with the money, that's not the part that I work in. I work in helping people heal and helping people die in a kinder way. Because cannabis can be much gentler on the body than pharmaceuticals. People who are addicted to opiates can slowly switch to cannabis and reduce and eliminate addictions to opiates and alcohol. I have a resident in my own home who's currently dying of cancer and is switching slowly from opiates to cannabis, is more lucid, has a lot less pain, less nausea from the cancer treatment. So firsthand, I see the benefits of cannabis and the fact that there are little to no risks. The people who end up in the hospital with overdoses of edibles are people who have lack of education and have been behaving irresponsibly and do not pay attention to packaging, or do not seek out information on how to dose correctly with cannabis, whether it be medicinal or recreational. So I advise you, I ask you to please consider that this is medicine. Nobody dies from cannabis use. It's less toxic than alcohol. Saying that cannabis is another bad thing is really not serving the medicine, because alcohol kills people, and tobacco kills people, and cannabis does not. Thank you.
Betsy, do I misunderstand, the medical part doesn't change?
No, to the extent that your last speaker was discussing personal medical use and the ability of a qualified patient, or someone with a physician's recommendation, or caregiver, someone like that, to obtain and administer it, that isn't change. You're really talking about commercial cannabis activities.
That's what I understood.
Okay. Some person we know, Jack Wamsley.
And we know he's from Canyon Lake.
Yeah. Well, I'm not really gonna take a position, yes or no, I think that's gonna be up in the council. My recommendation would be that all the statistics that you have, Colorado, San Bernardino, I don't care where it is, none of them match our city specifically. Though I would like to recommend, if you do pass it, that you put a time limit on it, that you say, this is good for two years. At the end of the two years, you take a look and see what the results are. See what's happened, see what's taking place. That'll give you the exact information compared with our city, not compared with somebody else or some other location. So that would be my recommendation. Make it for, if you're gonna pass it, then pass it for two years, and take a look at the actual facts, not something that's come from somebody else. That's my thought.
Thank you, Jack. No, thanks, Jack. Before I turn it back to the council, or council members, is there anybody else in the public? Because I've got all the requests that I, I think I covered everyone.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, we have Lieutenant Paul Bennett here from Riverside County Sheriff's Department, who might be able to speak to some of these things from a law enforcement perspective, you'd like to hear him.
Sure. It's a good idea.
I'm here because I was asked to be here, and just a little bit of background, I'm very familiar with the city of Canyon Lake. I actually was the manager, assistant chief of police for a period of time. But I also grew up in Lake Elsinore, so I'm familiar with the, very specifics with Canyon Lake. I never aspired to be a marijuana cannabis expert in my law enforcement career, but here we are. I have a host of information. I have been, unfortunately, in this particular role for the last four years. I can speak specifically to the issues with respect to public safety. I'm a public safety official, law enforcement, and perhaps first responders. So I've listened to the comments, I've listened to council. I will tell you that the city attorney, in my understanding of the law, and dealing with this for the last four years, she is, her information is very accurate and correct. So she's providing the council with sound counsel. And that's not always true when I go to the different seminars. You know, as you know, the Sheriff's Department has 17 contract city partners that we are responsible for providing law enforcement. And then there are a total of 28 cities in Riverside County. I've tracked all of them, I know where all the cities stand on this particular issue. There is a reason Prop 64 allowed cities and counties and municipalities to make up your own decision, based on, like Jack said, the makeup of your city. So they left that in place to allow the individual council members, board of supervisors, to dictate what is going to transpire during this transition of something that's always been illegal, and continues to be illegal federally. So trying to guess what this current administration will do is a risky proposition. We do have partners, and we work directly with our federal law enforcement. I hear the conversations all the way up to the Attorney General's office, and I would not, I would not count them out of the marijuana recreational enforcement business. Just keep that in mind. With that, I'm here to answer the questions of council, if I can, to the best of my ability. If there's something specific that I can address, I can tell you the official position from the Sheriff's Department, from law enforcement, public safety, we are adamantly opposed to all things related to cannabis, and the cell, retail, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and otherwise. And you will not get a law enforcement official currently that has responded to the catastrophic mishaps associated with being under the influence of a controlled substance. And currently, marijuana cannabis remains a Schedule I controlled substance according to DEA. That has not changed. And the reason, the reason they keep it a Schedule I, and it goes back and forth to the scientists and universities, and they just finished with a recent study, the reason they keep it a Schedule I drug is because it is a mind altering chemical. It changes the way one thinks. That's not me, that's the facts, that's from DEA. I'm here to speak to the facts, if you so care to hear it. I'm like Jordan, I don't have a dog in the fight, my personal opinion is irrelevant. You've heard information, you've heard news articles, what information do you trust? What do we trust? Depends on what side of the field or what team you're on, perhaps. I can tell you, the false information out there is ridiculous, and it's primarily motivated by money. Public safety is not concerned with the money aspect of this. The evidence, the statistical data available from law enforcement perspective, there will be a significant negative financial impact during this transition from something that's always been illegal, as we attempt to create some sort of regulatory scheme and control the Mexican drug cartel, the black market, the gray market, we can go on and on. If you open a dispensary, a retail market here in the strip, and that dispensary or retail cell location is burglarized, it has to be investigated. If it is robbed, it will have to be investigated by law enforcement that the city pays for. If you have a fatal traffic accident on Railroad Canyon, that will have to be investigated. So I didn't just rely on data and stats. I've been to Colorado, I've taken the three primary cities, mostly Denver, Colorado Springs, Aurora, the three major, most populated cities in Colorado. If you drive through Colorado, you realize, I do a lot of driving, and I don't see anything until I come to an isolated city, where everything is confined in that immediate area. We don't have that issue here in California. In Colorado, it's still a felony to possess, sell, cultivate marijuana. It's not a felony in California. There is no deterrent. AB 109 and some of those other propositions have taken care of that piece of it. So there is no deterrent aspect of it.
If you can summarize, please?
I'm here for you, sir.
Jordan has a question.
Yes.
Welcome home, Paul, first of all.
Thank you.
I know it's temporary, but...
I can come back anytime.
You know, this whole issue is steamrolling. And you mentioned the word transition, what are we transitioning from and to? I mean, a transition is going from one size to another, or one object to another. What is it that you're referring to that we're transitioning from? Is this gonna be acceptable?
No, you're transitioning from a substance, marijuana cannabis, that has always been illegal, and now for the state of California, Proposition 64 says it's legal for certain, you know, within certain parameters. So going from illegal to legal, and still, I know the comparison to alcohol has been made several times here, but alcohol is not federally prohibited anymore. Marijuana currently is. And so that's the transition I'm talking about. And not knowing where the government is going to stand on the federal side of it, in the enforcement piece of it, is yet to be determined. That's the transition.
Don't you think that history dictates to us that changes are gonna happen?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so really what I'm asking you is, how do you think it's gonna be stopped?
Well, that's not a question I think anybody can answer. I don't know that it can be stopped, I don't know that we can stop crime, I don't know that we can, you know, stop a lot of these things that are going to happen. The question I think for us is, how do we mitigate the damage and the public safety impact as we go through these changes and processes?
So you're recognizing, though, that it is pretty much here to stay, we just have to find some way to regulate it and take care of it, then? I'm not, I don't mean to put words into your mouth, this is what I'm hearing.
It's a difficult, difficult position for all of us to be in. I do believe that there is going to be a very painful transition. The fact is, the state of California, they haven't even drafted all their, this regulatory scheme yet. We don't know what that outcome is going to be. The governor can sign the new assembly bill that comes across his desk tomorrow, you know, to bring both the cannabis and medical piece and bring it together was shocking. So we don't know what the changes are going to be. My concern as a public safety official is how do we mitigate the public safety impacts? The fact that, you can argue whatever data and statistics and information, the fact is, there will be an additional person killed as a result of a fatal traffic accident for somebody driving while under influence. It's a fact, it's going to happen, whether that happens on, you know, Railroad Canyon or on the 15 freeway. How do we mitigate that?
Okay, what I'd like to do with the council permission, Tyler, we've had a really good discussion, and they're good speakers, and all the council members, could we try to conclude this 10, or 10.2 by 8:30?
Could I ask one quick question? Can you summarize in general, is there any theme to what the other 28 cities are doing? I haven't seen one. In respect to commercial cannabis activity, I haven't seen one, but...
So my, this would be my interpretation of it, all cities are, they're exploring the options available to them. There are a couple that have been very firm, that said absolutely not. And then there are a couple, you used as an example, Palm Desert, where they have already drafted the ordinance and moving forward in the regulatory scheme.
They actually already have a dispensary, a dispensary. Yes, it's medicinal, but there's no gonna be much of a line between medicinal and pharmaceuticals.
Well, there is, as far as taxation's concerned. There's a significant amount, you know?
Okay, can the council, could you agree, can we wrap this up by 8:30 on this one, 10.2?
I think we're probably pretty much wrapped up.
I think we're wrapped up, I think it's just a matter of when we bring it back again, I guess.
Yeah, because there's gonna be no motion, there's gonna be no second. This is a good discussion, and we're gonna continue, but the clock is running, and by December 31st, we have to have something in place.
So I think if you have additional questions of him, that's great. Otherwise, what would be helpful for us would be to have some idea of what would you like to see next? Do you want to even, do you want it at the October meeting? Do you want to consider mid-September meeting, or would you rather have mid-October? What pieces of information or what ordinance do you want to see next to implement what you're thinking about? Or do you want to just come back with this and think about... Or do you want to just come back with this and think about it more?
Yeah, I noticed that there was five questions, I gotta find that, I don't think I'll...
Page 386.
Go ahead, Vicki.
Of the other contract cities that you have besides Canyon Lake, has, what has been the impact since, since January 1st, since this, this snowball started rolling?
So we, so Proposition 64, January, it was, you know, November of last year. I guess, so I manage our marijuana enforcement team for the Riverside Sheriff's Department. We have an entire Bureau of Special Investigations, major narcotics unit. So I see all things marijuana across the entire county, even when they're not our contract partners. So what we've seen hugely is a, is an increase in illegal growing operations. I have been to the explosions on the BHO labs where fortunately, nobody's died yet, but we had a small child, 10 years old, get blown outside the bedroom window, all his clothes gone, he's running down the street naked. Huge illegal butane honey oil lab. So we've seen an increase in the illegal activity. What we've seen, what we thought we pushed out was the Mexican drug cartel coming across the California border. They're now coming back over into California and opening up their cultivations. So we have seen an increase in the violent crimes, murders included, robberies. So we can go on and on with that. And so there is going to be a significant increase in public safety.
To, to respond to Betsy, there's, on page 386, there's five questions. And what I'd like to do is go through each, each council member and just answer...
I'm not ready yet.
No, no, they want to make comments, she's looking for some direction, I think, right, Betsy?
Are you, are you additional questions for Lieutenant? I don't, but that, that was what I wanted to know, is what our sister cities had to say.
Oh, I see.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Larry, you want to...
Okay.
You want to look at the five questions, what you think?
Actually, I'm, I'm same as Vicki, I've got...
I'm not ready.
I, I'm not ready to answer them all, I've...
Is your microphone on?
I, personally, I don't believe...
If, if the five questions are to be answered, I, I think that, does want to continue the present ban, I say no, we need to explore it to look at both the retail and the medicinal licensing. I don't know, I don't think manufacturing and distribution is in our best interests as a city because we really don't have facilities to do that because they require lots of power and lots of water and we don't have any of that. I don't know about non-proffiting and continuing cultivation except for personal. I, I don't know of that question either, but I do think we need to explore those questions.
Don, you want to respond at all?
Does the council want to continue the present ban? Yes. Do we want to allow any retail sales? No. Does the council want to allow manufacturing, distribution? No. Does the council wish to consider a nonprofit license? No. Does the council want to continue to ban cultivation except for personal cultivation? We can't stop that. Yes, I would like to. And I would like to say that since some of us are very convinced and some still are not, perhaps because of the things we've heard from the majority of the people of the increased safety concerns, that we consider continuing our ban. In a year, there will be examples we can look at. I would rather look at examples of real life experiences than read a newspaper from, a liberal newspaper from a state that's legalized marijuana because I don't trust them. And the people I've talked to don't agree with the articles in some of those newspapers. So I think facts are the way to go and I don't think there's a big brush. By the way, my son passed away and he was on medical marijuana for several years. I understand the comfort that it gives and that he was addicted to opioids and he was able to get off and get on marijuana. So I'm, I'm with you on that. I totally understand and agree with it. But I do not believe we should have a dispensary in the city and that's my stand. I think we should postpone for at least a year until we get more facts.
But Betsy, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we had to have something in place by the end of December.
If you wish, yes, you have a current ban on medical marijuana dispensaries. You do not have a current ban on commercial cannabis activities that aren't medical. So you need, you need, yes, you need to say, we're going to ban it or we're going to allow a testing lab, we're going to allow one retail facility. It sounds to me like you're pretty clear about manufacturing and distribution largely because I'm not sure where you'd put it. Maybe the nonprofit license system is something the state has allowed you to do if you wanted to accommodate a nonprofit that was serving people who couldn't afford cannabis. I'm not sure that applies here. The ban on cultivation, you may want to consider because you don't have large agricultural areas, although there can be indoor cultivation, I'm not sure how well suited Canyon Lake is to that.
It's a state...
No, in, in, commercial indoor. Yes, yeah. So I think your real question is, do you want to consider a testing lab? And I don't have any idea if one would even want to locate here or, and do you want to consider a commercial, the commercial activity in terms of what would, used to be called a dispensary?
Jordan?
Well, I made some notes, this is what I can find by, these five bullet point questions, I'm not going to repeat them, but I think the answer is Paul Bennett, our officer here told, kept mentioning mitigation. And I asked, you know, how are you going to stop it? And apparently, we're not going to stop it. We're going to have to control it is what, what you're saying. And I think that control is the whole answer to this. If we don't allow it, we're never going to know whether it's working or it doesn't work or whether there's going to be any money made from this. It, excuse me. I'm in favor of at least giving it a try. Well, as I say, we'll never know if it, if it's going to fail if we don't give it the opportunity to at least try. A sunset clause on a business might be a good idea, but stopping business, any type of business, is something that I've always been opposed to and I don't think this is illegal. So if it was illegal, I would say no, we probably shouldn't permit it. But if it's a legal operation, once again, I'm the guy that wants to keep this city afloat. I know you all do. I didn't mean to be self-serving with that statement, but it's always been important to me to make sure that we have adequate revenue and I think we're missing an opportunity if we don't allow this to happen.
Thank you. Vicki?
I won't be answering those five questions just yet because I do have some phone calls I need to make and some more considering I have to make. It's not as easy as saying, how would you feel if this was a bar opening up? Because it's not a bar opening up. We have such a blank area out there from all of this that it's not, it can't be that flippant or a strip club or anything like that that we don't have yet in Canyon Lake. It's, it's not that simple. It's not a matter of, like I said before, and I'm not even looking forward to the income so much because I haven't seen any proof that the income is going to outweigh the problems. So I'm not committing to this yet. But what I would like, it's great that you all gave as much information as you did and I, and I think everybody out there, and, and this is televised, anybody listening certainly has appreciated that extra information. But I would like to personally, as a city council member of the Canyon Lake City Council, I would like to hear from citizens, what do you want? What, what are your decisions? What do you want? Do you want to allow this to come in and, and provide the extra income? Do you feel threatened by the things that we've all heard here tonight? This was all very real testimony from people that are right in our backyards. So I have to tell you, that was legitimately frightening. But I would like to hear from the citizens to find out what the people of Canyon Lake, how they actually feel about this and give some guidance to their council. We're the ones that are going to be putting this in place, what do you want? Please let us know.
Setting the deadline that I set myself, I only got one more minute. So I'm going to just be straightforward, it's kind of who I am. I, almost everything that Don said, I agree with it, but in, in be, very simple, medical, yes, commercial, no. And it, that should be the end of the discussion. But I do believe we need to have something in place by the end of December. And I hope that the council would be agreement to try to work towards that objective. That said, let's, let's take a 10, 10-minute break.
10 minutes? And that side of the room don't leave us.
He'll empty the room with a 10-minute break.
John? Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. I've been dealing with this issue all this way. Thank you. I am, I'm glad you were here. Thank you. I got a little while. 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 How are you? Oh my gosh, let me, I'm like, I know you. We got two more weeks, so... Oh my goodness. I know. We're like, what is happening? This is not working. It just happened. I don't, I don't believe in the animal. We went, some of them didn't fit a picture. It does really fast. We were going to go this weekend, I was like, oh, I'm going to die. We went one weekend this year, it was 1/20 of a week. You ready guys? Just like, he's on the road. Does he taste like that on vacation? Oh my God, he gets me on edge so much, like I watch the cameras, he's like, bing, bing, in the kitchen. And I give him a hard time because he's like, okay, and then all of a sudden he's like, oh yeah, I'm going to put something in my truck, and next thing you see the camera, he's like driving off, I'm like, okay, bye! And so now I'm like, can you please do this right now while you're in front of me because I know you're going to walk outside and I'm going to see your taillights and the thing. And so he started laughing, so then yesterday when he left, he's like, or the other day, he's like, bye! I'm like, okay, you're leaving, did you give me my paper?
My mom.
Yeah.
She did two bone marrow transplants, radiation, all of that stuff. I'm like, how absolutely unbelievable, it was dodged against her eyes, that's why I get it, I get it, right? That was worse. Let me tell you why. After my mom, horrible, horrible. It was a laboratory person. It was, it actually inflamed the skin, it was so... I forget it quickly. My mom died years later, as it gets to you can possibly be. Years go by, what do I ask her? She says, you know, your mom used to go down to Chevy Chase, which is a game, to go buy marijuana and smoke. Yeah, you know, she would, you know, radiation, she had her sword so big inside of her mouth, she had something called lyza, right, to try to numb it, which didn't work. You know, didn't give her an appetite, she had no appetite, either she had an appetite or she couldn't get it down, she was so hateful, she would put some, she would go out, verify, smoke, try to forge it there. You know what I did? You know what I did? She was offended, I couldn't believe my mom, like, how dare you go smoke weed? I told her my whole life it's bad. I'm pissed off. Probably my mom lost her job, right? I'm sure people have her, I'm asking her to listen and, I mean, I, I say it, I feel this small, I actually, is that much of a shame? This shit, this mad, this dead mom, this abusive mother. So I, I do all of this stuff, basically as an amends to that, I mean, it's just constant, I can't believe it. You know, so when I... But I, but I, but I, but I do, and this is my amends to her, I just, I'm out of this. They're not lying, they really believe it. I get it, I understand, it's... Exactly, exactly. I'm going to stand back here and answer, you can answer, you can answer. But the truth is, no, that's not the fact. That's not the fact. You're outside of the fact. I will. Huh? How does that affect their birth skills, their adolescence, their autism? And treat them, start treating them, what about... They could, they could have dancers in their studio that they don't know that the kids are only eight to be taught. Because, and I think the same thing is true. I was going to look...
Tell her, I think...
I will, I'll probably see her real soon.
Yes, like she'd come back.
All right. I'd say...
By the way, Schedule I, Schedule I, its definition is absolutely wrong. It's a highly addictive substance, it's a... That's what the definition is. It's not...
No, I was worried too about the alcohol, the alcohol people, but what is the long-term effect of that?
It makes it sound like...
When you hear the word alcohol, it's like, yeah, exactly, like alcohol, like kids who have alcohol brain, okay, they're all breathing the same thing.
I'm totally with them on that. I hate seeing Fruit Loops and...
Yeah, I don't like those either. We don't hear those myself. Right. Right. Thank you. Thank you. I was really excited to...
So this is Randy, Randy Longman?
Yeah, we met.
Okay. Nick also?
Hello. Hi, Jessica, nice to meet you.
I'm Seth. Get it to go?
Yeah. We, we have to go too.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me. Oh, okay. Yeah, she said anytime. Yeah, I'll come back anytime. I had more guests. I'm a shop owner. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, actually, you want to write down? Grandchild. So, just to go Christmas, right, so I will... I'll buy you a box. I thought those were fantastic, yeah. Well, I know, that's okay. I think it's very specific. Doesn't work by all means, get it out of there. I don't want to do you as the city attorney, but not in the state. Really?
No, I'm not going back in on the lawsuit, but yeah.
And if you... Yeah, they, I agree with you. I agree with you. That's based on the analyticals. I called out, and washes. Yeah. But, Tim, Tom?
Hi, Jordan, you seen you, if you need anything, give me a call.
Yes, oh yeah, take care.
Even the last.
You ran me down, you ran me down to a Frazo.
Let's do this, let's go fast. I wanted purpose, move it.
I tried to get you out of here.
But see, if you're here and they want, they're gonna make it the others quicker. There's a method to all this thing.
I make a motion to skip over the rest of the agenda.
All right, ten point three.
Would you like it brought back at a later time?
Aaron, you wanna present it, please?
Yeah, uh, this is, this was brought, carried over from last time. Mayor Protem Warren asked for a detailed study, we, we came up with the six months of actual overtime hours. Terry Shea, the finance director. So if you, if you look at the second page on that, those are the, those are the overtime hours that were actually in payroll, the thirty-one. And then he did it based on, then the five, being open five days a week. And as you see there, we, there would be only twenty-eight hours of overtime, so there's a three-hour difference. Based on what, what Mayor Protem was asking for. So three.
Three hours less with, with.
Correct. Correct.
Can you fix that so we don't have those three hours? Keep your day? Seriously? Can you analyze where those extra three hours came from?
The, the one, yeah, that's probably true. It was, it was a training issue where we, where somebody was gone. If we didn't, if we didn't have the training, there's, there's the hours right there.
But, but Vicki, let's make a decision. And I try to put you on speed.
That, and then the other thing, what we've, what we've done now, and then, and then having stat, having the staff reports being, everything has to be turned in by Wednesday. So they have all day Thursday, which gives, just in case, you know, something happens. Mayor calls, hey, we've gotta do this, or the city attorney needs to change something, that gives us time in the morning to fix that. So, um, we can look at, we can look at it this time, we might have it now, because I know we have some training coming up next week. But that anomaly aside, we can look at it the next six months, report back at mid-year. We can, we can bring it back in mid-year if you'd like, just to, just to see where we are.
All right, let's have a motion, one way or another.
I move that we keep the city hours as they currently are, based on the consensus of the staff. Preferring that and the fact that, of the amount of money we'll save.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? A roll call, please.
Sorry, um, Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Warren?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion proved five zero.
Okay, ten point four. Aaron, you wanna present it, please?
Yeah, um, Mayor and members of the council, this is the city equipment policy, the reimbursement with regards to city, or personal cellphones and internet. And working closely with the city attorney on this. She says it's not perfect, that, you know, and she can speak to the legality of, particularly, we know the cellphone is, is an issue of how to track things. Um, we've spelled it out, the council was very comfortable with the continued form, but actually spelled out. So where it's sixty dollars per month for personal cellphone reimbursement and forty dollars for your home internet use.
And the form now says, a place for, says signature, right?
Yes, it does. We, we have an updated form that will, depending on this. Right, and, and it's a larger, it's, 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 it's fairly, it's laid out the same, but it's, it's easier to read in a larger space, to sign your name. And, um, things of that nature, so you'll be able to, be able to put those in a little bit easier to see it. We're also tracking now, as you've, as you've seen with the warrant, and admin and finance saw this yesterday. Um, we're including a spreadsheet now with reimbursement, so, which is also, it's a running total. So you'll see, um, what month the council members put in reimbursement for their cellphone, for their internet, and for mileage reimbursement for travel. And then there'll be a running total at the end, so you'll be seeing, that'll, that's part of the warrant now as well.
Okay. Uh, Betsy, and I'm almost scared to ask you the question, but it says, if the bill shows the calls for each line, the council member will mark his or her city calls or redact. The personal calls.
Or redact.
Now, what if, if, if there's not a line item?
If there's not a line item, at least once or twice, the council member needs to get line item. And you can get them online by logging into your account, you can get them by asking your provider to provide it. They're required to provide it. Some send them out with the bill, mine does, Aaron's does, some don't. We would use probably three months of those to establish an average of, that would be the percentage that was applied going forward. Although, those bills would be subject to audit at any time, and if anyone questioned that percentage, then we'd say, please get your bills and we'll back this up. There's no other, there's no easy way, or, or.
This is, this is not easy.
Straightforward way I can think of to do it. But we're trying to make it so you don't have to get your bills every single time and turn them in. Because in general, I think particularly for you all, your usage is gonna be about the same. Now, maybe if you hit some kind of big city event or something, it'll spike in a month, but. When this policy began, you could track time on calls, but now the plans don't work that way.
Right. It's, you write text and, and voice are thrown in, you're paying for data. So the, like, the whole, the business model has changed. And so, I think, as the city attorney said, the easiest thing is either take a city cellphone, or you do what Councilman Green's doing, and you write it off on your taxes and took, don't take the reimbursement. I think those are the least complicated forms.
But I can't continue what I've been doing?
Well, that's what they're saying, well, that's what the city attorney's saying, is that we're gonna have to figure out a way to come up with an average, correct? Because based on call use, it's based on usage.
And I think, I think on yours, Aaron and I, we're, I mean, we talked about it individually. We think he, we probably, he's probably achieved that with yours. Some of the ones with the family plans are harder.
Right, and so we know that's being rectified. So there'll be, they'll have individual plans, so we won't have what we've had in the past with some of the people with family plans. Couple of them will be getting individual plans, but as, as Betsy said.
I have a question. Can you have a cellphone that has two lines on it?
Yes, that is, that is possible, yes.
So you could have one cellphone with one city line and a personal one?
Correct. Yeah, it is possible. Um, actually, I know somebody who does do that, and he uses it through his iPhone, there's, I believe it's called. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's actually through Google Phone that he's able to do that. There used to be, there, I don't know if they do them now, because I know iPhone doesn't do it.
Conversation, please.
And I don't know if Samsung does it on, on their Android phones, but there was a time, probably six, seven years ago, where you could buy a phone that actually had two separate lines in it. You probably had two separate chips. But now I know you can do it, there is, we could do some research to do it. Yeah, the pain is now, because of all of this, you gotta carry two phones, right? And who wants, who wants to carry two phones?
Yeah.
And that's the problem. I mean, worst case is, is you take one and forward it to the other. Right? But then the texting is the issue. The voice calls, there's not an issue, it's the texting that's the issue.
Yeah, voice calls are.
Right, right. The email is not, is moot, because it's not, it's not on point, because it's on the servers here, so you could delete off your phone. It, we still have it, you have access to it. The phone and email is irrelevant, email and the phone is irrelevant. So it's, for you guys, the, the big issue is, yeah, time, time is, is, is the texting.
So if you don't text message, I'm sorry, if, if you don't text message, which I don't do, then it should be a non-problem, problem issue, wouldn't it?
Keep your bills on, because you have less data.
Yeah.
Well, it, it depends. Texting does go through, if you're using SMS, then that's using the cell towers. You, the only time texting uses data is when you're sending video pictures. If you have an iPhone and using iMessenger, if you have a, if you have an iCloud account or whatever, if you're going through iPhone to iPhone, that will use data as opposed to using the cell towers.
Okay, let's not make this too complicated. Dawn, you had a question, you had a question?
Two comments. One is that I noticed if you have a tablet, which the city provides, there's no, you can use it for anything, there's no restrictions, there's no requirements, there's no limitations.
Yeah, we have, to, that would be something we would have to address.
A tablet and use it for everything. And you have a city tablet, it's treated like a city cellphone. You, it's, you're supposed to have minimal, minimal incidental personal.
Right.
But you don't say that, all you're talking about is.
Yeah, I've put in tablet, and I didn't know people still had tablets. Yeah, okay, we would need to put in tablet.
The mayor, the mayor has one.
Okay.
And Jordan, do you still have yours?
So please.
And since, and. And what kind of phone do you have, Randy?
iPhone.
Okay, since they have iPhones, if they have their, if they, if they set up their, their iTunes, iTunes pass, username and password, then their text will come across on their iPad as well. And so, obviously, the email, once again, that's a moot point, it's just like your phone, it's the texting, that's the issue.
Don't text. Okay, Dawn, all your questions answered? All right, can we have a motion?
We need to change this a little.
Okay.
We need to revise it to include tablets, which would be treated in the same way as.
Betsy, what page are you on?
Four twelve.
Okay, so, a tablet. A tablet and cellphone.
We have to say city provided tablet.
So we're going to have to start getting a line list of each call and highlight ones that are.
Just like if you did that, I could say back in, back in the day, the late eighties, early nineties, when people would do that, yes, they'd go through, they'd get the bill. Highlight, you can, you're either highlighting your personal call, or your, your personal phone, you're highlighting the city, city business calls. And I guess that's what we take it, as the city attorneys.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Questioning something, calling back. How do I know, I mean, am I gonna have to keep a log?
Dawn, Dawn, please speak in there, so we can all hear you.
Okay, my question is, um, for example, I got a call from a woman the other day, and she had a problem, and I was working with her. And I called her back, and I've texted her and all these things. At the end of the month, I get my phone bill, and there's a phone list on there, I don't know who it is. So are we gonna have to keep a log of every phone call we make, so that we know which ones are.
So for numbers, you don't recognize.
Explain what it was, or? No.
No, you just, I believe you just have to highlight it, correct?
You, you have to pick, you have to pick an approach. You either delete the personal, you either delete the personal, which leaves the city, or, yeah, I guess you would delete the personal, that would make more sense. But you don't have to list it yourself, you, you could, I guess, but you should, you get a list from your provider. It may be.
No, what, yeah, what she's saying is that she's gonna have to keep a log, so she, when she goes back at the end of the month and gets her bill, so she, when she's looking at numbers going, well, I didn't recognize that one, and she's gonna go back to her log and go, okay, that's personal, that's city business.
About city issues. I didn't write down their phone numbers, I get my phone bill, I don't know who all these numbers are. I mean, I recognize, you know, the ones that my daughter or somebody that I called, but.
Jordan answered a question.
Since I'm the only one that seems to have a phone that belongs to the city, and Stephanie will attest to the fact that I don't know how to use it, so. I don't, you know, I don't send pictures, I don't do all those things. But is there a flat rate for the cellphones, for the city has?
I have to, I mean, we have to look at our bill and see how it's structured, it's usually structured around, um, one phone will be the primary, which will be a higher bill, because it carries everything. And then there's, then the other lines are ancillary, and they're a, a flat amount.
I mean, is there such a thing as exceeding the amount per month?
Yes, you could exceed the data, yes. Because data's, now data's our shared plan.
And does that happen?
We have, we have not had that problem, that we've, neither one of us have noticed, no, we haven't seen, so, I mean, right now.
I mean, I just wanna make sure I'm not abusing the privilege of having the phone and going over hours or whatever.
The iPads are on one bill and the phones are on the other, and, and so neither bill has gone over, that I've seen, neither bill, the iPads nor the cellphones have gone over their monthly data.
When I've looked, when I've looked.
I mean, I've had this phone for.
Can you hear me? Oh. When I've looked through the majority of the bills, there's never been an issue of overage. So we've been using the tablets and the phones within the allowance.
Based on our.
They warn you if you're about to go over.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get an email and a text.
Yeah.
Yeah, I used, I used to do that.
But I, you know, I, for a while, I was, I was going through, putting it, sort of going through an inventory of all the, all the devices we had. And in the process, I got to see a lot of the bills, and that's never been an issue, we've never been even come close to, uh, the, the allowable that we have, so it's. We can, we can probably do that. Um, these are on a, sort of a business account, so I think it's a little bit different than a personal use, so, so they tend to give you not as much, um, data usage, but, but, I mean, that's something we can look into as well, to see if it can lower it.
Now, you know, this is kinda personal on my part, but. I try not to use my iPhone as much as I can because of hearing, so when I'm home, I'd rather use a home phone. Now, do I, do, do we talk about the home phone, Bill?
No. That's, that's not, that's never been addressed. It's always been personal cellphone, home internet service.
Okay, so basically, what you're gonna drive it to, zero for me?
Yeah, and that's something you could consider as home phone as well, and probably, I'm assuming, all of you get your, do you get your phone and your home internet service through the same provider?
No, they're different ones, one Spectrum and one Verizon.
Okay.
Well, if you cho, if, if you wanna be reimbursed for it, we have to begin that way. And we don't like it, and we don't think it's particularly pleasant or workable, but we have to start somewhere. I mean. They're not supposed to do that.
We, we sent out a listserv, and. Right, and the majority of them, they don't even reimburse.
No.
They don't.
Because it's too hard to figure.
Right. At, at the most, they'll get, they'll get a city cellphone, and they'll carry two phones.
Yep, that's your option.
Yep.
Okay.
It's not the most convenient, but.
Yeah, they get a lot more than you. So we've, we've sort of gone around and around about this, and we do not. I don't, would we like to perhaps revise this to say that if you use a home phone instead of a cellphone, you can submit under these same rules? Maybe adopt this as an interim policy, see if we can think of something else and see how, if, if you can live with this. Because I don't know how else to proceed. We, we sort of beaten this to death. The problem is, the policy started when you could actually do this, and now things have evolved.
Sure, they've kind of gone, they've regressed.
The other cities are no longer doing this.
They have progressed in some ways and regressed in others.
Five hundred, eight hundred, fifteen hundred a month, we get three hundred a month, and we get reimbursed, that was sort of a little bone, I think they threw the city council legal, because, you know, we get. I always just looked at it, my cost didn't increase, so I don't submit.
But Dawn, I, I don't, you could be right, but I don't think so. It's the same thing we did with the POA. And we just, when, went from the POA to the city, we just, that policy was in place, forty dollars on the internet and sixty on the cellphone.
So the POA?
Oh, I did, I did, two years that was on the POA.
And so like, I think, you know, Councilmember Green, I think, has taken a good approach, he's, he's just tracking it that way and writing it off on his taxes.
All right, let's have a motion of some kind, please.
Make a motion to accept the reimbursement policy as written. As revised, excuse me, and if we need to insert a tablet in there, okay, then.
Part of the revision.
Okay, then we will accept it as the revision.
We inserted tablet and home phone. We inserted tablet and home phone.
There's a couple little, like, there's a sentence repeated, no word that doesn't belong.
Please, please share corrections.
Okay. And submitted within thirty or sixty days? Can we pick one or the other?
Sixty? Forty-five.
I would say not later than sixty.
I think sixty's awful long.
I, I agree with you.
I thought we went back down to thirty because...
Yeah, was, I think the committee came up with thirty, was it correct?
Okay.
But they had, they couldn't submit any later, like, if they missed a month, they're out of town or something. They couldn't submit any later than sixty if something happened. Or I guess we can bring that back to the council. We could make that, if they don't submit in time, and for some reason, we can bring that back and put it on consent as a special item for the council to vote on. If that's okay.
So we got a motion from Larry.
Accepted.
Okay.
As revised.
It's going to say thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Betsy, you got that, thirty?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, spending money, recall, roll call?
Councilmember... Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
I've said there.
Yes, I think, yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Protem Warren.
Yes.
And Mayor Bonner.
Yes.
Motion approved with revisions, five-zero.
Okay, now we're at ten point five? And Mike, you're going to present it?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't do the equipment. Go ahead and do ten point five, we'll go back.
That was it.
Yeah, you, you covered ten point four.
You just voted on ten point four.
Okay. Tonight's staff report is, per the request of the mayor, to, to add this to the agenda on having a discussion on a letter that we, that the city received on behalf of the Labor's International Union of North America requesting local government officials to oppose Southern California Edison's pending twelve percent increase. Again, this was just for discussion, for council discussion. I do want to note, Eileen Flores from Southern California Edison, who's the local government relations representative, has been patiently waiting to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Please.
It's all past our good times, isn't it? Good evening. As he stated, my name is Eileen Flores. I'm your Government Affairs Manager from Southern California Edison. Some of you might remember me from the beginning of the year when I presented information about our service here in Canyon Lake. I'm here tonight to address the letter you received from the labor union regarding SCE's general rate case because I'm concerned about the inaccuracies in the letter, and I'd like to take this opportunity to, to correct the misinformation that is in there. One of the things that they state is that there will be a twelve percent increase, which is misleading because it's not quite clear what timeframe they're referring to. But if you, if our general rate case application, or also for short, GRC, is approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, the increase in our system average rate during a ten-year span from 2011 to 2020 would average three point one percent annually. Also, in the letter, it states that customers now pay rates that are fifty percent above the national average. SCE's current system average rate is fifteen point seven cents per kilowatt hour, and that is about nineteen percent higher than our counterpart utilities nationwide, which is not fifty percent. SCE's average monthly bill is twenty to twenty-four percent lower when compared, and that's due to the milder climates that we have here, the higher energy efficiency building standards, and our customers use much less energy because of the commitment to conservation. The letter also claims that between 2004 and 2014, rates increased by eighty percent. For clarity, SCE system average rate from 2004 to 2014 increased from twelve point two cents per kilowatt hour to sixteen point seven cents per kilowatt hour. While I can't substantiate where or how the Manhattan Institute gathered its claim, but I can say with certainty that the ten-year increase was not nearly eighty percent. Affordability is always one of the key priorities we balance at SCE, along with safety, reliability, customer satisfaction, and commitment to clean energy. Through SCE's general rate case, there will be significant improvements to SCE's infrastructure that will better, will provide a better level of service to the community of Canyon Lake and all SCE customers. As Canyon Lake's energy uses evolve and grows along with our other communities, our electrical grid needs to be modernized to serve the increase in distributed energy resources such as rooftop solar, battery storage, smart inverters, along with the increase in electric vehicles and charging stations. As your community partner, I hope that you will give SCE the opportunity to meet with each of you, to go over the elements of our general rate case, so that we can answer any specific questions that you have regarding our filing with the California Public Utilities Commission. Thank you. Okay.
You said three percent a year, not, not the twelve percent, but...
So it's really hard to compare because everybody's bill is different. So over that ten-year course, which is, it's a three, the average is three point one percent.
Okay, so that's three point one percent in 2000 and...
So, in some of...
Right, and then more the next year.
Yeah, so, if you look at it right now, so...
Thirty percent in ten years is what, bottom line, sorry, but we're all a year late. Thirty percent in ten years?
So, so the numbers that we have right now, that the CPUC has also published, is that if it's approved in our, in the outline, the monthly average increase for 2018 would be approximately three dollars and fifty-six cents a month.
Okay, that's not what I'm asking you.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking, the way you read it to me, the way you read it to us a moment ago, what you're saying is that in a ten-year span, our rates will increase thirty percent by that tenth year?
So, yeah, so three point one percent each year, yes.
Okay, so thirty-one percent per, by, in ten years.
Three point one, yeah, for, over that span.
So that's significant. That's more than twelve percent. But my, my next question is, bottom line for Canyon Lake is that we are in a tier system that is unfair to our users because we are desert, not ocean, and we're lumped in with the ocean cities. What we need to do, and what we've needed to do for many years, is to get us into a tier system that matches our use and matches our climate. We all go over our base tier because we are not by the ocean, but we are in that base tier system as if we're in Costa Mesa or...
I'd have to look at that and, and look at the community map to see what, you know, what region you fall in that shows what your baseline is. I know it's different for every community, and I'm not exactly sure...
I believe we're lumped in with Diamond Bar and some of the other, or, and LA.
We are, we are lumped in with Orange County cities. So if you could check that, because...
So I can check on that.
Yeah, because that, when it gets down to what Canyon Lake people are suffering, no matter how much you increase it, we can't possibly sustain that. We're, we have people that are getting seven hundred, eight hundred dollar electric bills, and they're keeping their thermostats at seventy-eight, and they're working during the day so they're not home. I have solar, so I'm not one of those people, but mine are incre, my rates are also increasing, so...
It was worse a few years ago. Mary Creighton looked into that several years ago and got it reduced to something other than what it was.
Right. It was much worse before.
All-electric, because being an all-electric city, they gave us a break, and, and they did reduce that a few years ago.
But we're still in the wrong category. We're clearly not a beach city, we're clearly not an Orange County. We have to have air conditioning to survive the summers, not like some of those cities. So if we could start there, that'd be a great thing for Canyon Lake, and then maybe this thirty percent over ten years wouldn't sting so bad.
So I, I'll look into that. I, from my understanding, it's something that is brought up with the CPUC.
I think so.
So...
But if you can help us get there, I'll be right with you.
I will look into that. I'll look into that for you.
Okay.
So that I have a better understanding of, you know, what region and what your baseline is.
Okay.
Because, yes, I, you know, live in an area where it is hotter. I'm in the inland empire.
Absolutely.
We, we should be categorized with the desert cities, not the inland empire. And just, my bill, three, four, five years ago, was a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty dollars a month, and I added solar, and my bill last month was three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I was way up in the tier two, and, you know, you say, oh, you know, the increase is very low and blah, 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 but you get into the tier two, and all of a sudden it accelerates, and it's extremely higher. So I don't know that, that this tier thing relates with this percentage thing you're talking about, because, you know, it may start out as one point three or whatever your percent is, but by the time you get into tier two, which we all are in because of the heat and so forth, we're way beyond that. I mean, I can just look at my bill, and I can tell you, I don't understand all of it. I've called two or three times, and it said, you've, you've made a mistake, this can't possibly be right, and I get the, oh, yes, this is right. And I have solar. And when I got solar, they told me my bill would be maybe an extra ten dollars a month. No, it was an extra three hundred and sixty-nine dollars this month. So something's wrong somewhere.
Yeah, when you have specific questions...
I live alone.
Specific questions like that, please feel free to contact me, and we'll look into it. We can also have, we have experts on staff that are, that specialize in solar.
I spent, I spent an hour and a half on the phone with one of your experts, another hour on the phone, and then mailed them all my bills with the solar company, and the result was zero help. My bill is, they just both said that's how it is.
Okay, well...
So...
Okay, so, yeah, so I just wanted to, like I said, have this opportunity to correct some of that information. If there is other elements, if there are other elements of our general rate case that you'd like to look at, please let me know. We could sit down, look at specifics, if there is really something that is standing out that you'd like to look at. But I'm hoping that, you know, you'll consider that. I know the letter has, seems to be making its rounds, and we wanted to make sure that we're going around and answering any questions that our communities have.
Could we have a card?
Yes.
Thank you.
So at least at this point, we're, it's just a discussion.
Is there any direction council would like to give staff on this, or we're good? So maybe that's something staff can work with, then, or we can, we can have Edison come back and give a presentation on the proposed rate structure? Okay.
Okay. On the next one, probably I took, took the lead on that one.
Go right on ahead, Mr. Mayor, it's all you.
We have a resident in Menifee that's trying to, because there are people are using other, there's Sun City, they're using Quail Valley, they're using Romaland, and he's trying to get everyone within the geography of Menifee, that we call Menifee. And he thought it would be good for us as well. Now, I think there's a mistake on here, and I think if it's correct, it changed, was Quail Valley, but it changed to Sun City.
It's Sun City.
It's Sun City. So the question is, do we want to at least, they, they don't have the support of the mayor of Menifee, or the city manager, or the city clerk, okay? But he's still on a, a band, one person trying to drive this thing to, to make a change. Do we want to try and support and may at least have our zip code nine-two-five-eight-seven reflect as Menifee versus Sun City? That's the question.
I think if we're going to campaign for anything, we campaign for Canyon Lake.
But we can't...
I don't know that we can, I mean, really.
Well, we can't, we can't change, we can't change it to Canyon Lake.
Okay.
Okay.
A lot of people think it is Canyon Lake. They think nine-two-five-eight-seven was assigned to Canyon Lake, and it has not been. It's a, it's a, it's Sun City, Menifee, and Indian Ward Six.
But it doesn't say Menifee, it says Sun City.
Sun City, yeah.
And I, quite frankly, I think Menifee more reflects us than Sun City does.
This poor guy can't even get support from his own city, and here we are, being the bully.
Well, that's why I raised it. If you want to, just leave it alone, it's fine with me, but that's, that's the question.
I personally think that if Menifee wanted to change it, and the city manager or their council, whomever, we would have to go along with it, and since they haven't, they must have a reason. And I really don't think it's in our purview to do this.
Larry, the reason, I, I know it's the bias I'm getting, but there's part of this city that was absorbed to became Menifee, and they don't want to, in the various districts, they don't want to disrupt those citizens.
Okay.
That's why they want to leave it in, as Sun City, leave it in Quail Valley, leave it in Romaland.
Okay.
And, but, peace. If you want, everyone, just leave it at the way it is, it's fine with me.
I'm good with changing it. I'd rather be Menifee or Quail Valley.
No, it's, it's Sun City, you know.
Sorry.
Not really, because I got called two days ago, and when I gave my zip code, they said, oh, Quail Valley?
Really?
I do that all the time.
All the time.
All the time.
Okay, well, what, what is the...
How much effort do you have to spend to, to change this?
Just a simple saying, as a, as a council of, of Canyon Lake, if we had a preference, we would like to be Menifee, if we want to do that or not.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest Elsor.
No, no. I'm sorry, Jordan.
Just kidding.
I, I'm sorry, but I, I have a problem with the fact that he can't get his own city to do this, and I feel bad as, I feel bad as a city stepping in on their city saying, this is what we support, it's really not our dog.
Well, it is. I mean, Canyon Lake has, should it have something, Canyon Lake shouldn't wait?
I don't know.
If the city disincorporates, it's actually, because we'd be Menifee.
Right, we'll be Menifee anyway. I don't know. I, I personally just think that it's, if he's gone the route, and they've said, no, that I don't want to as Canyon Lake, usurp that, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I don't care. I don't want to make this a big issue. If, if everyone just says, let's leave it alone, that's fine with me.
That's a big difference, either way to me. You're the boss.
No, no, I'm just the mayor. I just one vote. Larry, you sound like you don't want to make any change. Is that correct?
I, I'm just, I just think we're going, no.
All right, let's just drop it.
You can leave it alone, and tell them, at such time, Menifee decides to want to change it, then we, then we could...
Then we'll support it.
When, when Menifee decides to make the change, we'll bring it back so the council can support it. Unfortunately, yes, because we don't have our own post office, so we don't have our own zip code.
Oh, we got a public hearing, Nate. I didn't realize there was a public hearing.
Correct.
All right, you want to read that?
Federal government at work.
Stephanie, you want to read the public, I got a...
This is, or, do you want to open? Did you open it?
Randy?
Go ahead, just read.
You want to open?
Open it at nine fifteen?
Says the public hearing introduction and first reading of the uncodified Tump ordinance one to seventy-four, amending and superseding ordinance number one twenty-five as amended by ordinance number one fifty-two, and the public hearing and approval of resolution two thousand seventeen dash seventeen, adopting the updated nexus study two thousand sixteen, supporting continued participation in the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Tump program as current fee levels, except for the reduction in commercial retail fees of seven dollars and fifty cents per square foot from nine ninety-nine to two forty-nine per square foot effective immediately.
That's about a five percent increase, just a little over five percent, in case anybody's interested.
Yep.
Was there staff report?
Yeah, yeah, seriously, but that's, it's okay. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, if you'd like to see if there's any for or against for this, and then if there isn't any, close the public hearing.
Is there anybody in the audience who want for or against? Okay, then we close at nine seventeen.
We can have Councilmember Aaron Krantz speak to some of this, because you are our WR cog representative.
Yes. I can recall the first time that I got stuck with the Tump fees. I was a little upset, but I'm not anymore. And I think these fees are fantastic, and that's how we have Railroad Canyon Road out here. I know there are some cities that think it's inequitable, that they pay more than we have to pay. It just so happens that we're built out. I wish that we had all this room to build on. And I think all the builders would be happy to pay the Tump fees. And it was, it was discussed at quite length the last couple of months. And, you know, I've reported over several months that the fees were going up for single residents, which is fine, as far as I'm concerned. And the biggest item was reducing the fees on retail, which is appropriate. We shouldn't be discouraging retail businesses, we're about helping them. So, that's really all I have to say, that I think that these Tump fees, they spent a lot of time on the NEXUS study. This is what they came up with. And I would recommend that we approve this.
Well, you're the expert.
Well, I'm not exactly the expert, but I've heard the numbers.
Okay.
On enough occasions.
Any further discussion by the city council?
And we may even get the intersection down here at Railroad Canyon Road, put together because of these Tump fees.
Okay, the, could, a motion then?
Make a motion to accept.
Oh, I did that.
Actually, you need a motion to-
Approve ordinance.
A motion to introduce the ordinance one seventy?
Is this the first?
One seventy-four.
First reading.
And then you need a motion to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen dash seventeen. Now, two thousand seventeen dash seventeen won't take effect until ordinance one seventy-four takes effect, which is sixty days after second reading.
So, I make a, I, we accept ordinance one seventy-four for the first reading?
I'll certainly second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Okay, city manager comments?
Wait, we have, we have one more. We have to move to-
The resolution.
Resolution two thousand seventeen, seventeen.
To accept resolution two thousand seventeen.
I thought that was together.
No, it's two separate.
Okay.
Larry did separately. Yes, you are correct. Okay.
So, moved?
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
No, we're not.
Okay, city manager comment?
Uh, let's see. Fire department's going well. Looks like this last, we saw the July numbers. We just got the August ones. We'll talk about those in a few weeks at the next public safety meeting. But it looks like now, this, the July month, that they were, it was about sixty, over sixty percent of the calls went to Station sixty-first. Based on, you know, when I talked to Chief Hawkins initially, based on, based on the way they do their dispatching, we were looking at, you know, at least twenty percent. It looks like we're getting like sixty percent. So, we're really utilizing our station. I mean, he was here tonight, and he's getting me a report. B.C. Davis is getting me the report to know how many times that Engine sixty is out of the city limits, and how many times they're going out of the city limits as the first on-scene engine. So, I will get those numbers, hopefully have them to you. I'm hoping to have them by the next meeting, yes, depending on, unless they, you know, with all the fires, if they keep getting sent out on fires every other week. So, I'm hoping to have those numbers for the October meeting.
One thing that came up with the public safety, and I had said something wrong last month. I thought the, all the first response within Canyon Lake is going to come from Station sixty. That's not true.
That's not true.
It's the closest fire station.
Right.
So, like Continental, Continental Street?
We'll get ninety-four, unless it's, unless it's on a call.
Okay, so, I mean, I respoke incorrectly.
That's the way they designed their system. I mean-
And we did ask at one time, was, because Lake Elsinore wanted to modify their response plan, and we, they were politely told that the modification would not take place.
Right.
That as it stands, sixty would have its response area, ninety-fours and fives, and ninety-eights out there on the far end, so.
And I'm assuming, once we start seeing these numbers, and I want to get that report, at least for the, for the first six months, so come mid-year, when I see all those numbers, we'll see how much of, I think, of positive support we're having on our neighbors, particularly maybe the Canyon Hills area. And I'm assuming Engine sixty has probably been a big help.
Right.
Right, so, that's why we're going to be looking at the numbers over the next six months to see, you know, six, being, having sixty open doesn't just benefit the residents of Canyon Lake.
Okay, anything else? Aaron, anything more?
No, looking forward, what about the police? What, uh, we will be, there's going to be some changes in leadership at the Paris Station. Captain Ford has been promoted to deputy chief, and he'll be over Westside Operations, so he won't get away from us that quickly. So, if we have any problems with the new captain, he's only a phone call away, so. Our own police department.
I don't think anything in the last month, because Larry went out of town.
We haven't done anything. The other agencies, we're waiting for some other information. The matrix study that the, those participating cities are in are in the review stage. And so, we're waiting to see what happens with that, because we probably should have been a player. But even though we're not, since we have the lowest level of service with only one deputy, we can actually take advantage of the study. We can see what it's going to be. So, we're kind of waiting to see what happens with the study. Right. Right. So, we're trying to address, you know, like I said, Councilmember Green is heading up and done a yeoman's job of trying to regionalize, not just fire, but looking at, you know, police services as well, and finding out what, you know, what model works best for Canyon Lake could also work well regionally. And so, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, committee council reports, comments. Jordan, you're first.
Well, I really had the month off. I only had one meeting, and that one meeting is when I was out of town. So, other than yesterday, I was fortunate to participate in finance and the public safety. And I will comment that, I'm sorry, nothing has changed on public safety. We had one person.
Yeah.
And that, something needs to be fixed there. I don't know what the answer is, but I guess we need some controversial items or something for people to show up here, because.
Well, you know, we tried the night times, and we were-
Jordan, we don't have to have problems to get people to come in.
Well, they're not showing up otherwise, so.
It's easy to complain.
But, really, that's, that's the beginning and the end of my report. I'm sorry. This month, I'll probably be a little more active.
Okay, Larry?
Well, August has been kind of a dark month for everybody. I will be going to downtown Riverside next month, next week, to do an orientation with the Conservatory, W, what is it?
RCA.
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 No, RCA.
RCA. And, and, and they faxed over fourteen forms that I have to fill out.
Oh, that's just the beginning. You're going to be hours over there.
You know, well, they, they said, they block a time, and they say, you're going to be in their HR for a minimum of an hour to hour and a half. You got to bring two IDs, fingerprints, I mean.
You have to nift a little badge out of it.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Oh, man, I can't wait.
Are you charged about RCT?
No, 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 RCA.
RTA?
No, RCA, Conservation.
Anyway, anyway, that's what I'm doing, and I didn't get this by walking into a doorknob.
Okay. And Larry, I think you're going to enjoy it. I, that was the first two years I was at RCA, and I tell you, you learn a lot.
It's a really good, it's a really good one.
Okay, Dawn?
Okay, I got an email from Southwest Riverside County Cancer Survey. I don't know if they sent it to anybody else, but I would like to suggest that we put the survey on our website. It's just that what they're trying to do is to determine how to better understand and serve Southwest Riverside as far as cancer patients are concerned.
Right.
And so, they've got this survey. And I've already talked to one woman who's waiting to get it, wants to take it. I think we ought to put it on their website, and I don't know, I'm putting a writing wire between you or anything, but at least, I think, putting it on our website.
If the council's, I mean, we can put it on our city Facebook page. It seems to be, social media seems to be a good way to get it out.
Yeah.
So, we'll put it, we'll get that out in the next week and get that on our Facebook page.
Should there be something on it to explain why we're doing the survey?
Yeah, we'll put it, well, we can, we can put a, we can actually, you know, copy the email in there, saying this is, this is what it is. Any questions, contact the person with the-
And I'm going to take this POA.
Okay, I have, I have a copy of the email, so we'll be able to put that in the Facebook post.
If, Dawn, allow me, brought up the Friday Flyer. Remember the electrical information? And we're going to make some changes after last?
Right.
And we're going to give it to the Friday Flyer?
Right, when we did, right. Jim Barrett's been on vacation, and so, we're waiting to finalize that. So, I can send it out to the, the idea was, once we get that all done on his end, we're going to send it out to the council for you guys to have one last review. If we don't hear, if anybody has any heartburn, and then, yeah, then we'll, we'll put it out.
Okay, sorry, Dawn.
I have met with several people from the Senior Center, people that can't drive any longer, and they have a lot of medical appointments, and they're running out of friends to take them places. Yes, I should do this on the, and it's really bothered me. I've talked with them about bus service, and I've said, I'll be glad to get you. But it's that last mile that's the problem, getting from their home to Railroad Canyon to be able to get the bus is the problem. And I met with RTA, because one of the ladies has used Dallaride, and she had some really bad experiences with it. So, I met with the fellow at RTA that's in charge of Dallaride. And he told me that in the past, the service agency that was handling that was really screwing up. And they have been all over them, and service has improved. They're still thinking about replacing them, but they, they gave them a time period to improve. And he said, they have significantly improved, but they haven't checked the records at the end of the month, September, I think, to see if they're going to replace them. So, I had, RTA has these twelve to fifteen passenger buses that I think I brought up once before, that they will donate to cities or organizations. And I spoke with, I just threw it out there to the POA council board. And they, well, it'd be a lot of, we'd have to train drivers, and we'd have to have insurance, and, no, we're not interested. So, I talked today, I had a budget meeting at RTA, and I talked with Larry Rubio, who's they had. And he said, they would bring people out, they would have a coffee with donuts and so forth at the Senior Center. They would tell the people, give them the bus routes, and even take them, one thing that they suggested, and two other cities have done it successfully. I talked with one of them, it was Beaumont. They organized a group, and they went on a shopping trip. They all went to some mall on the bus. And RTA took them there, had lunch afterwards for everybody that went, to get people, older people especially, get them more acclimated to riding buses. And our buses on Railroad Canyon go to the outlets, they go to Walmart, they go to Temecula Mall, they go to Menifee, and nobody knows about this. People, I've talked to people, and they go, you're kidding me. We have a bus that goes right here that, yeah. So, I am planning, the gal sending me, from Beaumont is sending me her whole plan for how she set it up. I talked with Larry, and he said that they will coordinate everything and set it up for us. So, I'm going to set up a couple of shopping trip for Christmas, and then a trip to Pachanga, which I think could be very popular, just to get people used to using the bus. And he also said that they have, I had suggested to them that they, so many people don't know what the bus routes are, and they're, you know, I didn't. And I got one of their books and looked at it, and I was amazed at the places it goes. And so, I said, is there some way you could get those bus schedules and times out to the public? And they looked at putting them in phone books, and that was too cumbersome, didn't work. So, we talked today about them doing, extrapolating from the whole plan, our local area, and, you know, just within where our people would be interested in going initially. And they're thinking about contacting the Friday Flyer and getting, publishing a brochure and having an insert in the Friday Flyer that would go out to every household. They were thinking about door hangers, and I said, well, Friday Flyer would probably be a really good way to do it. And I don't know if the POA would allow door hangers, anyway. So, I think that's what they're going to do. So, hopefully, we can get people more aware of being able to have some transportation. And I'm still, I'm going to meet with the general manager, the, yeah, the general manager of the POA and the president, and I'm going to do a whole presentation this time on the bus. They will train the drivers. It's a very minimal training. I don't know if the city would be willing to pay the insurance on the truck, but they could charge people to take them, just like Dallaride does. But it would be more a specific destination, so they wouldn't have to wait an hour for Dallaride to come and pick them up. So, I'm going to move forward with it, and so, that's a couple of things I'm doing.
Dawn, Dallaride, I understand the service went south for a while, but they used to go right to the house and pick people up.
They do. They will pick you up at the house. Theoretically, it was within a, if your appointment was at nine, you need to be picked up at eight-thirty. They would be there between eight and eight-thirty to pick you up. It was a half an hour, and when your doctor's appointment was through at nine o'clock, they would be there between nine and nine-thirty. Well, that hasn't been working out. There's, they've had some really, people with bad experiences.
Are they trying to get back to that?
They're, they're, yes. It's improved significantly. The one lady I talked to, she just wouldn't use them again, because she said, I sat there for almost three hours.
Wow.
And, you know, I've had people tell me about bad experiences. So, they are working on that, and it will be better. But I was thinking more in terms of, you know, the bus could take people. If you have somebody that lives on the other side of the lake, and they want to take the bus, they have no way to get to Railroad Canyon. If they had a bus there with volunteer drivers, they could just call somebody up. Can you go pick up so-and-so and bring him over? More that kind of thing, or small groups that want to go to Pachanga from the Senior Center, or, I don't know, there's myriad of things that it could be applied for. And their big objective was training drivers, and I found out that it's a minimal requirement, because it's a very small vehicle.
You don't have to have a special driver's license?
It's, no, it's, I think you have to have some kind of an initial added to it. But it's not a big complicated thing like a regular truck driver, bus driver would have. And they said they could train, they would be glad to come out and train the people. So, I'm going to try again and see if we can figure out a way that. I just feel sorry for these people that are my age that can't drive anymore, and they're just housebound. They can't get to the doctor, they can't get to the grocery stores.
Thank you for what you're doing on that. Okay, Vicki?
Okay, just a couple of quick things. We have an alum treatment. I'll have to go order appearance. We have a Veterans Day celebration meeting coming up on the thirteenth- appearance. We have a Veterans Day celebration meeting coming up on the thirteenth at five-thirty. That's a different time, different day. And then we have another one later on in the month also. But that is to coordinate our Veterans Day celebrations. So anybody who wants to come, come out, tell us how they want to see things done, and any suggestions. We use and love lots of volunteers. The alum treatments for the fall is actually going to be a little bit earlier, nine twenty-five to nine twenty-nine this year. And last but not least, I did go on our website to check some dates because people were asking for, how do they find out dates of meetings? Our calendar doesn't have anything on it. You click on calendar, there's nothing there. So if there's a way that we can have somebody once a week check that.
Staff will rectify that problem.
Stephanie, staff will rectify that problem. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just, a couple of things. We had, JPL Insurance is right near the market, and they're really interested in it. I've had to use them twice already. And they, they say they can do everything AAA can do other than travel. So it's a DMV type stuff. They can handle that kind of stuff as well, normal insurance and what have you. And they're, one had ten years with Allstate, and the other had ten years with State Farm, and they got a lot of experience with.
That's one right by the market?
Right.
The new one?
Yeah, there's the market, then the flower shopper, and then the next right in, right there. And I had to recommend them, and good service. Okay, I met, at the end of July, went to meet the mayors, and one thing, from September ninth through the twenty-eighth, on both sides of Railroad Canyon, not at the same time, but those fences are going to be changed. So citizens need to be really careful driving in there.
It's actually the twelfth through the twenty-eighth.
Is it twelfth?
It starts Tuesday the twelfth.
Okay, well, I told them yesterday.
We were just looking at the plans because we, we plan on putting it out on Facebook and up on the website. There will be lane closures from seven to five, Monday through Friday. They won't, they won't be working on the weekends.
Okay.
Seven to five?
Yeah, unless they're behind schedule. So right now, if, if they do work on a Saturday, I think it's eight to five will be the lane closure, correct? Eight to four.
Are you going to put something on the Friday Flyer?
Yeah, it won't make it for this, but yes, we're going to get something out to the Friday Flyer, and we'll put it out on the city's website and Facebook.
There's no way they can delay that from seven to eight so that people can drive their kids to school.
It should only, it's only the right lane, so.
That's, that's the one that everybody comes out of Canyon Lake, is the right lane to go down to school.
It's going to be on both sides.
The majority of it's on the, on the north side.
Right, exactly. Okay, that said, I want to do two things. I want to adjourn this meeting in the name of Jim Lewis. Jim Lewis is a person, a week ago today, died on the ninth fairway, somewhere on the ninth hole. And I want-
He was on the green, I think.
Huh? I never, I heard different stories, so I don't know. He's a heck of a guy.
He was down right by the, the green. He was right by the top.
Tremendous, tremendous person.
Did you know Jim Wilmes died Monday?
Who's that?
Jim Wilmes, John Wilmes. He worked on Tuesday Work Group.
There's going to be a celebration of life on the eighteenth at the country club. So that adjourned. Now, I'm going to ask you, and I promise it won't take five minutes, but it's something I just wanted to like, I'd like to talk to the council about. Erin and I in particular, but all of us are, are trying to do a better job of communicating with each other. And Betsy, let me give you a couple of examples. I had asked Erin to send the performance plan, improvement plan, to all the council members, okay? No response, okay? And I think in fairness to Erin, he, you know, we don't need to have three or six months from now saying, oh, by the way, you weren't doing these things because we didn't comment back. So I'm encouraging people to look at that improvement plan and give any feedback to Erin, in fairness to him. The other thing, Betsy, there was something I learned in 2014 where, talking at the, meet the mayors, a recommendation, not everyone, but not unanimous, but more than fifty percent said, because the staffs are relatively sized and can only so much hours to work, that at least three, a majority, at least three should agree that we should have the staff do this, this, this task, or this project, or whatever you, okay? But what, I was talking to Vicky earlier today, and I guess when I sent an email and copied all the five council members, that's a, a serial?
Can I read real quick?
Yeah.
Are we adjourned?
Yeah, yeah, we adjourned.
Okay, you can shut off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, he was, he was still recording.
It depends on what the subject matter is. If you are sending information.
I think you're supposed to.
If you're sending information, the form you were sending, that's informational.
The form that you are sending is informational, Randy. You weren't asking anybody to do anything but fill it out and send it back. If you were asking for a consensus of the council, that's the problem. But you, you weren't in that case.
Well, let's take the, the zip code, okay? I said, you know, this subject is, and here's the information. Do you agree that we should talk about it or not?
We said put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not talk about it.
But nobody responded back.
Well, I think they were expecting it to be on the agenda.
Well, that's, that would be requesting consent, and that makes a chain letter.
I think that's why nobody, well, why nobody answered, because they expected it would be on the agenda, which was the appropriate place to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that means in this position, the mayor can put it on the agenda, and the other four council members don't want to talk about it.
Well, and that, and let's be blunt, that's true. That is one of the small prerogatives of the mayor.
But does the council, do they have the concept, do they, they think before we tie up the staff that we should find out if there's enough interest of the council members?